Okay, welcome to the regular council meeting. The date is Tuesday, September the second, twenty twenty five. Time is seven oh four. And with that, I'll call me to order. And we'll move to the adoption of the agenda. The most about the agenda. So like Council, how it's secondly, how it's about amendments, changes.
Yeah.
Council.
Okay, thank you. It's a long agenda, so. We take notes. In terms of the doc adding, I've got an on table item. Which I believe everybody has, which is called in office attendance resolution. And I replace that with a resolution, so it's one point one point one. On the deletion side. I I know Mr. Blackwell's advice is spelled one by one through these, I'll just run through the list. Would be ten point one point three, which is a snow and ice management policy. The next one, which is actually two, is ten point one point eight, which is zoning development by law, three setbacks. And the other one is ten point one point nine, draft subdivision servicing. So that my thinking out of the bag, I believe that could be a committee of the whole. Next would come would be ten point one point eleven, which is village survey. The next one would be ten point one point thirteen, which is fees by law. The next one would be ten point three point one, which is important in terms of sensitive items. And the last item would be ten point three point two, best use of village facilities. And I have no other additions to additions.
Yeah, Mr. Blackwell.
That's a recipe for disaster with regard to council considering that lockstep in barrel.
I mentioned earlier on that we do it.
Yeah, it'd be better to do.
Okay.
Pardon, you don't, you know, I mean.
No, he did.
I just first up.
Before.
I did any of this, Council Abbott, and then we'll come back to Council McLaughlin.
Um, okay, I have two additions.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, my resignation, I said, does council consider each one of those independently, vote on those independently? That way you'll know what's on, what's only going to be on the agenda versus not.
Do we do that prior to Council Abbott's?
Yes.
I mean, okay, Council McLaughlin, first one for elimination on.
Thank you very much. The addition, it's self explanatory. The quick synthesis is that, as is the occurring in enterprise and government throughout Canada and the United States. Employers being asked to return to the office. It's simplicity, that's it.
Any other comments?
I'll say.
Okay, seconded comments, all favor.
Yeah.
You have a comment, okay, Council Brown.
Yeah, no, I I think that that. This has just come up, and I I think that staff should be given an option, an opportunity to to input. And and respond in some way.
Jeff O'Neil, okay.
Yeah, so so I would not support.
Okay.
Including in this item.
If not, all in favor of including it?
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay. Uh, next item, Council McLaughlin.
Thank you very much, ten point one point three, which is snow and ice management policy. I found it interesting reading. It's, in my view, operational. And a little bit for me to ever opine on our drivers who are out there at two in the morning as to which street they chose to pop. In its simplicity, that is it, sir.
Okay, any comments? And and this Blackwell.
Uh, the reason it's on here is it's it municipalities have been instructed. Through my A M I A B C and through case law around those matters that attract the greatest degree of liability, like building inspection. Sidewalk inspection, which is less of an issue here, of course. But snow and ice management is another one that attracts significant liability. And so it is important for for municipalities municipalities need to shield themselves. From the potential for liability around snow and ice management by establishing a policy that sets up how it's going to. Manage snow and ice. And so long as the municipality follows its policy. It's to this point in terms of B C Supreme Court and these court appeals. It has shown to be protective. So this is getting ahead of the ice and snow season. And it will provide the the protection. Living potential litigation. So I strongly suggest that council act on this at some point.
Okay, any other comments? Uh.
We have probably deal with this.
I need a second there.
Okay, second there. Okay, this is to eliminate this from.
To eliminate.
From the agenda. All in favor of eliminating this from the agenda?
I think if we postpone, we've got a big agenda. So I'm.
We just defer it.
Defer it, sorry.
Just a different.
Okay. Okay, any other comments or recall a question?
So we're going to defer it.
Oh, we, well, is there an amendment that's acceptable to defer? Yes.
If I may, Mr. Brown, I understand, I heard what Mr. Blackwell had to say. It's a well written report. If it stays on, I don't expect it to take us more than a minute to say yes.
Okay, so you're withdrawing that. I took motion. Okay, great. Next item, sir. Council McLaughlin.
Sorry, these are the two of them, ten point one point eight, ten point one point nine, zoning bylaw development, which is the setbacks. And drafts of the subdivision and. Servicing this comprises over hundred twenty five pages, and I don't propose, I'm an expert, I'd like to take more time with it. Uh, and I would propose that this comes back as a committee of the whole.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell.
Uh, there are two applications that are pending. Uh, we have subdivision application, which we have statutory application to. Act on and implement within sixty days. We're at about five months. The reason is, we have a one page subdivision servicing bylaw that is. I've never seen anything like it anywhere in Western Canada. So it is woeful when I begin to touch it. It gives zero direction with regard to any servicing requirements associated with subdivision. So we need to act on it. So if council, you know, even could consider giving it first reading. Uh, and then it can be brought back when there's more time on the agenda. It keeps things moving. And still gives council the room to engage in it more deeply. Uh, the other one is a pending application. Uh, the issue with the bylaw is that the text in there is not legal. And it needs to be corrected so I can deal with this application properly. It should take less than thirty seconds. Because it's simply a legal language change to make it work better.
Okay, Council Brown.
A municipal advisor identified that we had. Bylaw real challenges and and encouraged us to address them soon as possible. So I would encourage us to, with these staff, we've asked staff to address this as quickly as possible. I would really encourage us to deal with it tonight.
Okay.
Um, I think we might need to split these ten point one point eight, I'm hearing what the C I has got to say. Um, that is one which, well, one sentence changing of bylaws, I'm sure you could deal with that tonight. Ten point one point nine, I I agree, Council McLaughlin, there's a lot to take in there. Um, I. I also somehow feel we've got caught in front of a horse here because. Um, I was led to believe we're going to be looking at, um, zoning bylaw. So, owning bylaw tonight, which which didn't happen. I think. We don't, we haven't sorted out subdivision bylaw looks like. So how do we do the servicing on that if we haven't got that? I I think this last need to be committed on me. And we need to talk about all these bylaws and what we're trying to do. As opposed to approving your servicing bylaw that, and and I did have a quick read of it, it's good. I I jumped to tables because that is the easiest way to find what's going on. It's got things that don't sound like lines of it at all. So I I I think, yeah, I agree, don't have time for this tonight, I think. And it's ten point one point nine to another meeting, but I could have taken one more.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell.
Uh, in response, the, we were trying to get the building bylaw on this agenda. Staff in working with Lipton couldn't get it on this agenda, but we hope to have it on the sixteenth. With regard to subdivision servicing bylaw, that's a standalone bylaw that only the approving officer refers to. Council Mary is involved in subdivision applications. There's no statutory authority for council. It rests solely with the statutory approving officer. But statutory approving officer, which is me, I need. A viable tool to use. And if I can't get this done, I were already way past what is legal. If this drags up, and it's purely a technical exercise. And you can hear from Mr. Burr with regard to how it was developed. And it is one hundred percent boilerplate. Standard subdivision servicing bylaw language. In fact, it's kept it back forward. They have to use the one page document, which doesn't say anything. And it basically says Philly boots. There will be no provisions around servicing.
Okay, uh, in the in the spirit of moving forward, since we're trying to improve the agenda here, any other comments before we call a question?
One point eight, but or ten point, yeah.
Okay, we'll vote on ten point one point eight, all in favor.
Oh, well, so sorry.
This is, sorry, in favor of eliminating it. So all in favor of eliminating. Uh, we had motion by Council McLaughlin, second by Council Canada, all in favor of eliminating this from the agenda, the channel, please. Okay, opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, a motion defeated, it'll stand on the agenda. Okay, item ten point one point nine, draft subdivision servicing bylaw. Council McLaughlin, you're proposing eliminating it.
I did, yeah, for the same reasons.
Okay, um, any comments?
I'll second that one. And I agree, I would like more time to actually look at it as the. C I O said it passed through five months, and we got this on Friday. I would like more time.
Okay, Council Brown.
I think I've already made my made my comment that that we've requested these things to be moved moved forward. I think if we give it first reading. We we, if there's issues that we can certainly address those, but I think that we need to move along.
Okay, uh, any other comments? Okay, uh, Council Abbott.
Sorry, one one other comment. Ross, I'm also a little puzzled how you say, well, you need this, and you can go do subdivisions. Through subdivisions, but. As it stands, we have a C A C issue, the village council has never resolved, that means that you can't actually prove subdivisions. We have those C A Cs. So how would you do that?
Okay, through the mayor, Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you. How C A C, C A Cs are nothing to do with subdivision in the context of by its fate. The, so every every person is permitted by statute to be able to apply for subdivision, as well as very second. Doesn't mean they'll be successful, but they have the right to reply. And they have the right to have their application done with it within sixty days. The subdivision servicing bylaw is the tool that is developed for engineering purpose purposes that's that sets out. What kind of servicing is required to the properties, what size pipe you have to utilize, whether there's a creek like required or fire hydrant or whatever the case may be.
And Mr. Blackwell, or we'll kind of short, just, uh, this is going to be approving to discuss this in more detail or eliminate from the agenda. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor of eliminating this from the agenda? Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Hey, next item.
And a ten point one point eleven village survey. I don't believe this would be wise to do this.
Okay, motion to eliminate, second. Okay, Council Abbott, second discussion. Council Brown.
Well, I appreciate that we requested it be brought forward to September, it's been brought forward and. I just think that we should give staff the opportunity to move ahead if if they're able.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell, you had your hand.
Just for the benefit of those that may be interested, so the resident satisfaction survey is something that's usually delivered by staff, doesn't involve council. Uh, and the reason why staff do it is to to reach out to the community, to get feedback on how. Well, services that staff are providing are working. Do we need to make any adjustments to anything? Solid waste disposal would be one of the examples of that. It could be grass cutting the beach park, et cetera. This allows us to have a better handle on where we need to shift resources. And this is something that should be done with some frequency so we can establish a baseline and monitor that over time. So reaching highly suggests from a staff perspective, reaching out to the community. Frequently is better than not reaching out at all. And so that's the reason why it's on here.
Okay, Council.
Do we require a resolution for staff to move ahead and take this initiative on their own?
Mr. Blackwell.
You don't, but I would prefer that it be sort of a collective exercise rather than just purely staff. That collaborative approach, because it's such a small community, that collaborative approach, I think is a far better way to go.
Council Abbott.
I think it should be driven to the thing, Council needs to weigh in on, look at some of the survey questions. I don't think we have time to do that tonight. Um, we've got so much else on the agenda, and and I really think of all things that staff are under so much pressure. To to get done, I believe this is a high priority right now. So I agree, Council.
Okay. Councilor.
Can we defer this to a future meeting when we don't have such a large agenda to get through?
Okay. Council McLaughlin, you okay with the the motion to defer?
Prefer is deleted from the agenda.
Okay, all in favor of deleting? Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Next item.
Thank you, ten point one point thirteen. This is the fees by law. No problem with the fees by law. I just wish it would come black line to red line, but changes there are no, I can't tell you what happened. So this could come back, and it was changed, I'd be happy to have it, but it's not.
Hey, uh, any comments, Mr. Blackwell?
You know, only that, it's really, I just point out to council, it's hard to get anything done. Because everything gets delayed, deferred, and just it's this roadblock after roadblock after roadblock. And so it gets frustrating for staff. Who are doing all this work, but cannot, as soon as it hits the council table, it cries to a halt. So that would be the only. Sense of frustration that I would convey to council.
Okay, Council Brown.
In the past, that's always been a comparable, so we can see where the changes are without the existing document being provided with this new one. So we can cross reference it. This is a conversation that could continue on and on and on and really take a lot of time that we don't really have this evening. So for it to come back with comparable changes would be much more helpful.
Any other comments? Okay, my only comment is, staff was recommending that we review this. Uh, and as Mr. Blackwell said, um, we keep kicking things down the field and. And not getting business of the community done. So, okay, all in favor of eliminating. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, Council McLaughlin.
Thank you, ten point three point one. Important items, sensitive, it's important intentions of items. I believe that most of these items have just been covered in one form or another. And a brief, that's, can I think with a busy schedule, it's. Less important, less time sensitive.
Okay, uh, we have a motion for that second. Okay, second by Council Abbott. Uh, Council Brown.
Um, okay, I placed a number of items on the July eighth agenda. Uh, and they included items such as emergency management, discussion of the fire, fire chief. Talking about summer safety. I put an item on the beach park, which I've requested be on each agenda because it's front of mind to many residents. Item about the agenda, but item about Batani Creek. Uh, an item about volunteers and a an item involving village health. And, um. In in various forms, I placed those items on the agenda on July the eighth. And they were removed from the agenda summarily. The, uh, I I then placed the items again on the agenda because they were continued to be time sensitive. And, um. On the July twenty second agenda, and they're again removed from the agenda. So I've now replaced them on the agenda for the third time. And note that the section on emergency management and fire sheet position. Was the number three fifty action log item. That we agreed in the June seventeenth that it would come up at the next meeting. And for it to not come up in in so in these meetings, and that's now the third consecutive meeting, I find. Uh, very problematic. Um, the items I put on the agenda are items that are of considerable importance. To community members who have spoken to me about them. I am, uh, I have a fiduciary responsibility to the residents of this community to bring forward items of concern. And to try to, uh, provide information, provide the opportunity for decisions to be made. Or for matters to be referred to where that where action can take place. And to have them removed from the agenda, I find, um, quite frankly, out of order. I I just don't. I don't I don't accept that that's that's an acceptable practice. And for it to occur for a third time, I find quite extraordinary.
Okay, uh, Council McLaughlin, you was the motion, uh, would you like to speak to it? I already have. Okay, Council, put your hand up.
Um, I read the list, as in three previous meetings, and I've read Michael's read the night again. I didn't hear a single thing we hadn't dealt with at another time or discuss. And many of them being resolved, you might, and we come back with something we haven't dealt with, this new absolute put them on the agenda. But I don't think we need to have risen to all these being rehashed, because we've dealt with them. And they have been discussed. So I I agree with this. We haven't got time for this tonight.
Okay, any other comments? Council Brown.
These items require ongoing updating and. Accurate information being provided to the community. And to say that they've been dealt with is is not appropriate, not not accurate, so.
Okay. Okay. Uh, I'll just comment. I think they're all important items. Uh, I think in perspective, Council Brown. Putting items forward, uh, and, uh, council has seemed to eliminate things on an ongoing basis. Uh, I I don't think that's respectful in in terms of the Tannin Creek. Uh, there's still a big fence up at the bottom of that slide debris. I think that should be on every agenda, emergency land management planning. Uh, we're in discussions with Metro. Uh, we have Mary here tonight. Uh, that's an important item. Uh, fire chief, obviously, we need a fire chief and the beach park. That's been five years plus. Uh, and so I I would say these are important items. So, Council Brown.
We have the beach park on the agenda already. We have the emergency management coordinator here. We had a discussion previously about the fire chief and where we're going with that. It seems very repetitive, and now we're spending an extraordinary amount of time talking about things that we have already talked about, and we've got a lot to get through.
Okay, I'll call a question. All in favor of eliminating this? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next item, Council McLaughlin.
Thank you, ten point three point two, best use of village facilities. Uh, I believe this is an operational matter, matter. If the village staff want to undertake this, I suppose I can do that within their own timeframe. They don't have to come to us for it. In fact, their council would be involved in this in any way. I would not see that as where I would like to go. Thank you.
Okay, any comments or a second there?
I'll second it. I'll pass a comment. Um, I've had a few of my items removed from the agenda because they're operational or I'm told to rephrase and reword them. Um, question for the C I O. Do you not see this as operational?
Yes. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor, Council Brown?
Well, I think it's the use of of village facilities, the. The fact that. Multiple use of all village facilities requires a wide range of resources and equipment. And, um, I, you know, I just think that, uh, we have limited resources. We need to bring all the. Information we possibly can to bear and how to best use of information that we have. Uh, and the facilities that we have. So I'll I'll leave the, uh, the information that I provided on the agenda. For for review. But I I I think it's a, it's a reasonable. Request to have accurate information on how how to best make use of the limited resources we have.
Okay, I'll call a question. All in favor of eliminating this from the the agenda? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next item, Council McLaughlin. I'm at the end of my items. Right, okay, Council Abbott.
Um, I have two additions. Uh, and we got, as I said, I split them up. One's in, one called M five. Is time since the, is going to be a discussion, uh, the C A C meeting, the tonight, on Thursday night about this. So I, a, and it was not objected to, so it should actually be on the agenda. It's just because of the way I presented the documents. It was combined with the other one, which was requested to be rejected. So I'd ask this one go on the agenda, and if possible. Get to the top of the council report list and to make sure we get to it tonight.
Okay, um, a second for this. Second by Council McLaughlin, comments? No comments on this? Okay, uh, all in favor of adding this to the agenda?
Is this, is this a motion or is it information?
Um.
This is adding it to the agenda.
I've explained on the.
Okay, okay.
So we'll add that under resolutions. Eleven point, eleven point one point two.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, next item. All in favor?
Yes.
So.
The next item is what I've called in four. This is about the annual report. Uh, I think it would be just a very quick discussion. I now see that the annual report has actually been removed from the website. Uh, it wasn't when I wrote this up. Um, and just a way forward on who can help to get a more accurate annual report. And I've got some suggestions.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you. Just on that, uh, I sent an email to council that received no responses. Regarding, uh, the need to ensure I have accurate information for the Canadians for twenty twenty three. Who was, on which committee, and who chaired it, and if anybody left when they left, and if anyone, if they were replaced. Who replaced them and when they replaced them. That's the single thing that's holding up, the completion of the.
Council Brown.
Um, I'm sure I prepared a response, and I'll check maybe in my outbox.
I never response to you, I'll get to it, but I didn't, my question is, we can, I've got the hundred pages.
Okay, do we need a motion on this, or is it, it's it's in action? I mean, it's it's updating.
Council Abbott, this in action, do you want to withdraw that, or would you like?
I guess I could, I would withdraw if the agreement is that we are going to provide. Paragraph.
Provide input to make it more accurate.
Each committee group and correct the, if that's the agreement, then I will provide that.
Are you happy with that?
Uh, so long as we can get, so so what I've done now is put a abbreviated terms of reference. Through sentences or less for each of the committees, just to give the community a sense of what each committee does. If you want more than that, uh, I would ask you to get, I'd like to have this standing report on the September sixteenth agenda. But this, so I I can.
Most, most of them are prepared. I've already asked committee members for them, so they've been prepared already. It's just a question of.
Just keep it short.
I said one paragraph, and we agreed, because you told me one.
All right, let's move on.
If we've agreed, I can now do that, which I was told I couldn't.
Okay, Council Abbott, we're going to move on. We haven't even got through the agenda. Any other items?
This council, Abbott withdrawn this.
Oh, we were told.
All in favor of the agenda as amended? Opposed, motion carried. Okay, we'll start the agenda. Thank you for that. And we'll move to, uh, number five, public participation. We'll open it up. Anyone on the floor or the gallery wish to speak? Oh, okay, we'll go online.
Hold on, uh, sorry, I was missing the mute. I would, I would like to, uh, to speak to, uh, it's Ross Mickeljohn. Uh, fifteen and Brunswick Beef Road, um, speak to item ten point one point eight, if I may.
Okay, go forward.
Okay, so, um, we currently have a development variance permit. Application in the works, and I believe, I'll let Ross speak to this, I believe this is. Probably what brought up some ambiguity in the current bylaws relative to, um. Uh, front yard averaging. But I'm not entirely happy with what seems to be in front of council here. Uh, this is within, it's seven point seven in the zoning bylaw, front yard averaging. Uh, as I understand from day. Uh, as I understand from Dave Butler, there was a a legal opinion, uh, legal opinion that the the front setback averaging applied to the front setback as defined in the village bylaws, which is essentially the the part of a parcel facing the road. There was some ambiguity in in the bylaw that said, if you had two front yards, no way to define if you had two front yards. Uh. So um, I'm not entirely sure uh how we make the jump from having a legal opinion that the front yard is the front yard, the front, the yard facing the road. But we're going to apply the front yard averaging provision to the rear yard as it faces the ocean. I I don't understand how we make that leap. Um, I obviously have a, an interest here in terms of our client, uh, in terms of their buildability of their lot at at uh Two Ten Lines Bay Avenue. Um, this uh front yard averaging's uh provision doesn't apply to us because we have a lot, an adjacent parcel on one side, and we have an adjacent lane or defined as a highway on the other side, so the definition of the front yard averaging applies to two adjacent parcels, so it doesn't. It doesn't apply to us, but I I still think it's kind of ambiguous and kind of odd to put a provision in that says front yard averaging applies to the rear yard. So I I appreciate that uh C I O, uh, Blackwell.
Sir, I'm going to, uh, I'm going to suggest we're over the two minutes. Um, you've made your point, I think that that's very important, and we are going to discuss it at ten point one point eight on the agenda. Uh, so, um, thank you very much, uh, you brought up some very valid points that the should be debated.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next.
Norma Rogers.
Okay, Norma?
Hi. Thanks to council and the climate action committee for providing a plastic et cetera recycling depot. Our household now accumulates about a garbage bag of garbage a month. It's a great initiative. I have some comments about the agenda material. Concerning the proposed plaza restrooms, I object to taxpayers' funding of washroom facility on commercial property. This is not a public space, the grass is roped off for use by customers of the cafe store. The cafe is required to provide a washroom since they serve food. Any issues with motorists needing to use facilities is not a taxpayer resident problem. Also, thanks to B E O Bindra for his comprehensive report resulting from audits of garbage bylaw compliance. Facts will determine the best case, best course forward. I think the resident satisfaction survey is a good initiative and would like to include questions about options for garbage storage, so I hope will be brought up again later. I share Ashley's concerns about fire danger and the carelessness of some hikers. I am often picking up butts on Bayview and Mountain. Finally, my response to the people complaining about the amount of parking violation fines is park legally and avoid a ticket. The signage is plentiful and very clear. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Norma, any other? No, okay, with that, we'll move to delegation six point one, Canada Post changes and updates.
We have a delegation. Could I introduce Mr. Lee?
Yeah, Council Brown?
Okay, I just wanted to give a little bit of background. Um, I was, I was contacted, as many of you know, I, uh, my family owned the Lions Bay General Store for almost two decades, actually, up until late about two hundred, two thousand seventeen. And uh, so I had quite a number of dealings with Canada Post. This summer, I was contacted by Ruby Bates, who is the manager retail network for the Pacific. And she was quite concerned that there was a lot of confusion about what was going on in Lions Bay. And and she was probably less concerned than a lot of residents were because there, there had been a, a message sent out which caused a lot, a lot of upset regarding um to our value of customers regarding postal boxes. So anyway, um, Ruby asked that, asked if if uh, if there was any way I could kind of walk her through what, what was, what the confusion was. And ultimately put me in touch with Mike Lee. And Mike is the manager of uh, of government and and community affairs for B C. So he's, he's been terrific in terms of being responsive to uh, understand what what the issues have been in Lions Bay. So as a result, some discussions, um, I think pretty much, hopefully, we have the Canada Post has has things relatively well resolved in terms of the fact that the postal boxes are continuing as they are. Uh, and and they've worked out some other issues. So with that, I'll just introduce Mr. Lee and and who was, said he'd be available for questions. I'd like to applaud the fact that not only did he, you know, provide information to go in a village update in all the mailboxes, but he also provided his phone number and email address for anyone who had questions and was confused at all. So Mr. Lee agreed to come and as a delegation this evening to answer any questions and to to speak to us.
Uh, welcome, Mr. Lee.
Thank you.
Well, oh, hi, everyone. Well, thank you for inviting me to to speak here tonight, really appreciate the opportunity. And I I just wanted to say, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm on behalf of Canada Post Corporation. I'm, I'm very sorry of the the confusion that we sort of caused the community. Once I found out about the issue and that the issue that, you know, the issue that didn't work for the residents, I immediately reached out, you guys, for your, I guess, opinion, spoke to a a number of residents in Lions Bay uh, to correct the issue, and we ultimately were able to be able to, we were successful in doing that. So now all post box renewals and assignments will be done in West Vancouver uh, compared to what was said in the note before, which uh directed people to Britannia Beach and Squamish. Uh, and with that, I have provided my information, I I believe my, my information was on the village update on August fifteenth, uh, my phone number and email information and everything. I have been contacted by a handful of residents, uh, which I was able to direct them through. And for any sort of further Canada Post related issues, I would be happy to a- address them, you guys have my information. I'm not someone that just, you know, some, someone that lives in Ottawa in a, in a, in an ivory tower with a, you know, echo chamber. So I, I, you know, I, I, you know, I live in B C as well, um, I, you know, I, I live in your time zone. I understand the specific needs of of the village. So uh, again, please reach out to me if there's anything further that I can do to provide you uh, and you and your community with better service.
All right, thank you, um, sweet, uh, Council Abbott, you have your hand up.
Good, um, hi, Mike, uh, Neville Abbott, uh, we traded some emails and discussions. Um, I throw a little bit of a wrench in the works here. Um, there, not all residents would prefer to go to West Van. Um, there's, it's difficult parking area, there was, there are many residents that have gone to Squamish. Um, prefer a slightly longer drive to better experience. You know, to get parking, because this is a big wall, open mall, if anyone hasn't been, there's lots of parking available. Um, and many residents prefer to go that way. My email to you, I asked if it was possible for residents to have the choice of going to both. Um, and I would have thought with, you know, one in technology, that should be fairly simple, should everything's on the same database or shared files of some sort. Um, your response was no, it had to be one or the other, and I wonder if you can just elaborate on that.
Uh, Mike?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not an expert on how, you know, these types of ser-, uh, these databases and services work. But I was told by our retail folks that it it had to be assigned to a specific post office, the, the whole database. Uh, and and it's something that couldn't be shared between two corporate offices.
Okay, any other questions?
Is there, sorry, I just think, just following up on that, sorry, this is for, um, is there a possibility for you to go back and maybe challenge that and ask it one more time or maybe uh, put it from a little different angle? Because there are a significant number of residents that would prefer to go to Squamish, had gone to Squamish, and would like the choice.
Uh, I, I, I.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mike, sorry.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll certainly go back and ask our people a a bit more and certainly get back to you on that, uh, Council, uh, Neville.
Yeah, since, since uh, appropriate. Um, just the other, just a clarification, in terms of picking up the parcels. Um, the parcel uh bank continues in the post office. And so people can receive the keys and pick up parcels there. Uh, any other parcels continue to go to Callfield, is my understanding. There's no change in that? That, that additional parcels, registered letters, that type of thing, go to Callfield. Is that right?
Yes, sir. E- everything should stay the same.
Okay, good.
Okay, all right, uh, thank you very much, Mike, we appreciate you coming, coming by to speak, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, the next item is six point two, oh, sorry, uh, next delegation is uh, Mary Brown, six point.
Great.
So on um, August twenty-fifth, I sent Mary on council uh, a letter describing a cultural, a safety and humility training workshop, which is going to go forward at the end of October, and I hope you all read the email. I did, several people did get back to me with their questions, et cetera, we got, it's already half full from the people I extended the invitation to. So um, I, I just want to know from you guys, because the time is going quickly. Uh, anything else you want to need, you need to know about this workshop?
Mary, maybe you can just elaborate on, sorry, my emails haven't been received in the last month.
Oh.
Uh, so you can tell us a little bit about it.
Okay.
It sounds interesting.
Yeah, um, we have, uh, a, a grant was given to us, but through um, community emergency management, community emergency preparedness fund. And this is specifically for indigenous cultural safety and cultural humility training. We received forty thousand dollars for it. Um, this kind of training is mandated through problems, we're all supposed to do it. Um, I have been speaking with um, a coordinator, his name's Jonathan Reynolds. And he coordinated the, the um paddle project that some of the E S S people did over on Boon Island. And we had, um, had two elders come from Squamish Nation. And um, they, we had meals with them, they shared their experiences with us. They shared their unique way of teaching in the indigenous style. Which is really interesting. And I was speaking to Jonathan about this, and I said, could we do something similar instead of doing the paddle, could we make drums? Uh, mostly because drums are used for communication. Um, also, when you sing together, it's in cooperation, uh, you have to, to, to be listening to each other. And I think those three points are something that this community needs, and particularly this council needs. Uh, and so I said to Jonathan, can we do this? And he would bring in elders who um are particularly sensitive to communication. For instance, if uh, a, a, a ocean canoe is going to go out and there are some people in the canoe that aren't getting along or are not cooperating, that canoe does not leave the beach until it's safe. So it's just kind of a different way for us to look at cooperation, communication, and and working effectively together.
Sounds fascinating, okay.
We can also open it up to uh, uh, staff, and we can cover their hourly rate if they're given the three hours off.
Any comments, Council Brown?
Um, I just noted that I specifically asked, as you've just said, that the emphasis be on team building, effective communication and cooperation.
Yes.
And I just applaud your work on doing that, so I think it'll be a great exercise.
I think you're gonna love it.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Mary, uh, Council McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mary Barry, I, and I participated to, with some of my E S S colleagues in Boon Island experience, and it's much more than making the product, it's quite the experience. And I know uh, some of you who know me well would say it's hard to say that I came away a better person, but I did.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll just, I'll just keep following.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mary.
Okay, uh, next item is the approval of uh, the July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five minutes to.
So moved.
Second, second, okay, uh, discussion.
Um, yeah, Council. Page ten, under adoption of the agenda, item two. Um, this is about um, the addition of use of space and storage. And it says it was moved by Council McLaughlin and seconded by Council Abbott. I don't believe that's correct. I think it might have been removed by, uh, moved by Council Brown and no one else, but I'm not sure who seconded it.
Okay, well, move it by Council Brown, that sounds a lot right, and seconded by Council McLaughlin, I believe, yeah, so. Okay.
If I may, can you, sorry, I was trying to find it here, can you keep the number?
Uh, I'm looking at page ten of the agenda, the number of the minutes.
Yeah.
Um. That's number, number two, and the call, call to order. Closure meeting, three, production of the gender, and the adoption of the gender, item two.
Oh, ten point three point.
There's no ten point in, oh, okay, sure, that's item ten point three point eight.
Okay.
Is one, one year thirteen, yeah.
Okay, all in favor with the amendment? I, exposed, motion carried. Eight business rising permits, any business rising? No, okay, unfinished logs, item number nine, nine point one, actual log items, any items on page twenty-one? Uh, the councillors wish to pull up stuffs?
So.
Council.
Um, I apologize, I, I was a bit slow, I was, I did have somebody else under, under the approval of minutes, that's, I believe recorded incorrect. Can we get that to?
Is it a?
I think it's fairly.
Quick item, we've already proved.
I think it's important.
Yeah.
I mean, it's important.
Go ahead and move it.
Okay, on top of page thirteen, this is the chief permit application. Um, it was passed, as it says, item, the following conditions, proceed with the work proposed, sorry, proceed with the proposed scope of work. Um, and it was carried. It was not approved with the proposed scope of work from the tree committee. It was approved with the requested scope of work from the proponents, which is something quite different. It's not clear how it's measured that, what, what was actually approved.
And the tree committee wouldn't approve anything, they'd make recommendations.
Yes, and we, and we decided not to approve the tree committee's recommendation. And we approved, everyone else is not even in, we approved what the proponents asked for, which was different. And that's not what the minutes actually sound, can we just make that correction?
That's right.
Yeah, I agree, okay.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll take care of that, this is a conversation that uh if you have a deputy, and I had with regard to how best to capture that. So that is completely consistent with what we were trying to use. By doing.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move to uh, page seventy-one, action log items, any action log items that councillors would like to follow, Council Brown?
I just take the point of item two ninety-seven, which is fail to complete a cost benefit analysis on document storage options. Um, that was, you know, feeding my, my, my concern about uh, storage and use of space and so on. So I, I just, um, I, I assume that that CEO is, is then going to bring that to council, so.
Okay.
Also, section three fifty.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Blackwell, comment on that, two ninety-seven.
Yeah, so this is something we've been looking at resolving. Record storage in particular is an issue. And in particular, um.
And in particular, um, the, the statutory obligations we prefer to properly secure in council meetings and so forth. Have some serious concerns about us being too vulnerable around that security, and we don't, well, I've certified protection, and we don't have any place to do it. Putting in the shipping containers, not great because there's not climate control and there's all kinds of costs, and we've looked at an extension of the back of Brown Hall here, about the stairs, building on the two story scenario there, one for record storage, that's custom to that purpose, and another area for ESS storage, which will create up space elsewhere. All these things cost a lot of money, and there are other sort of pressing priorities, which is why it's sort of hurry up and wait. Even something as simple as a four drawer standard filing cabinet that is fire resistant, it was six thousand dollars. Three, so that's, that's nothing that works, so we need another.
Okay. Any other items?
Okay, um, yeah, I already pointed out, uh, item three fifty was referred to the, to the subsequent staff meeting and, or pardon me, the subsequent, uh, council meeting and was removed repeatedly, so.
Okay.
Want to kick the dead horse.
Uh, any further items which could be discussed?
Yeah. Item three fifty three, Mary's left, as we said, Mary was still yet. Um, I was gonna ask when we're gonna have an EPC meeting.
October first.
October, I thought it was the third.
First, 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 third. Maybe the third, yeah. And she's, she's, she's notified.
And came around today, too.
Okay.
Okay.
It was.
Oh, she did it. She did it.
Did it again.
Sorry, I thought.
Any other items?
Sorry, I, I didn't want to get that.
Yeah.
There's people that say they couldn't make it. Wasn't there two people that couldn't make it on October the first?
No, I think that was the one, the previous meeting that she suggested.
Let's take it offline and.
The cause.
Any items, uh, that we can discuss here, that, that, I think coordinating a schedule will be offline.
Sure, that's, yeah, if I may, I stick, that's fine. I just thought we still needed to do that, okay?
Okay, uh, nothing further. Okay, we'll move on, uh, to report, staff report ten point one point one audit update. Uh, for information, it's Blackwell, any?
I'll turn it over to Mr. Chirkov, who can make the introduction.
Um, Corey Vanderburg is our partner from MFP, is, uh, connected with the, uh, the current audit for twenty twenty four. Um, he will provide a verbal update, if he has a PowerPoint to share, and to walk through. Uh, my agenda, there's a set of procedures, and if you don't report it, I'll let Corey scan on that.
Okay, Corey, if you're online.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's frozen here. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Uh, can't see on that monitor, but, oh, you can see here.
Okay. I'm just gonna get my presentation going. So I'm hoping you can see MFP Coffee Cup cover page.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Council, for inviting me here to attend your meeting tonight. I do have a, a short presentation. Happy to be going through your twenty twenty four financial statements and to be able to report out that the audit is complete. I have one minor outstanding item. We always do a, a, a check with your lawyers to make sure there's nothing uh, new or, or outstanding. Once I get that completed, I'll be handing off an audit report. So I have a very brief presentation here. I'll talk about your twenty twenty four financial statements and then a little bit about the audit process. A reminder, you know, as you're getting staff reports throughout the year, you might be looking at the, the general fund or the sewer fund or something in isolation. When we're putting together the financial statements, it's all on a consolidated basis. Water, sewer, general capital, and as well as the reserve funds, so we bring it all together. Starting with your statement of financial position, at the end of, uh, twenty twenty four, you had cash and cash equivalents of six point two million dollars. Uh, just a little bit down from the prior year, six point four. And, uh, if you add in your accounts receivable at the end of the year, you have six point nine million dollars. Um, very consistent with twenty twenty three. Debt being paid down on schedule is one point four million dollars, and total liabilities, including that debt amount, are two point six million dollars at the end of the year. So if you take the total financial assets of six point nine million dollars, subtract off the liabilities of two point six, you get what we call the net financial asset position. That's the liquid position of the district at four point three million dollars. Tanswa capital assets being managed are twenty four point two million dollars. And the accumulated surplus on an accounting basis at the end of the year is twenty eight point five million dollars. I'll get into what's in that number in a future slide. On the income statement or the statement of operations, so what happened throughout the year in twenty twenty four? On an accounting basis, total revenues of, uh, five point five million dollars, down a little bit from the prior year. There was some semi-grant funding provided by the province in twenty twenty three that, that did not, uh, did not happen again. That was a one-time amount that they provided. On the expense side of things, total expenses increased, uh, about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars to four point eight million dollars, but still below the budgeted amount of, of five point two. Uh, so the increase from, from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four, uh, is related to, uh, staffing. But there were some staff positions that were partially vacant in twenty twenty three, as well as a, a ratified union agreement. But an accounting surplus position at the end of the year of one million, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Now, I say accounting surplus because we've got non-cash items in there. Accounts, we like to adjust deferred revenue and some other things around. So when you're thinking about your budget, the cash flow statement is more in line with, with what you're thinking of for the budget process. Total operations for the year were a net cash inflow of one point four million dollars, which was then spent on capital, uh, one point four million dollars of capital projects and capital spending. Debt being paid down on schedule of just under two hundred thousand dollars, so that represents that net cash outflow year over year. Um, almost exactly one to one being the debt payment. The accumulated surplus balance of twenty eight point five million dollars, most of that is that top line of what we call invested in Tanswa capital assets. That's the physical assets, buildings and infrastructure minus the debt. Then you have four point two million dollars set aside in reserves, or actually put aside, an additional four hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty four on a net basis. And the unrestricted fund as a surplus position of one point six million dollars. Shifting gears then, uh, the, uh, just a couple of quick slides on our audit. Uh, we, as I mentioned at the top, we have, have finished the audit, we are providing an unqualified audit opinion. That means a clean audit opinion. We are satisfied that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects, in accordance with the right, uh, public sector accounting standards for local government. The last step would be approval of the financial statements, and as I mentioned, I'm, I'm waiting for one lawyer response. I should get that within the next day or two. When we go through our audit process, we do look at the controls in place to make sure you're getting accurate financial reporting. We sample transactions, we don't look at every transaction, this is a limitation of audit. For the, for the, uh, cost benefit of performing an audit, I'm not looking at every transaction throughout the year and sampling. Again, a big thank you to, uh, Joe, uh, the finance team and staff, uh, CAO throughout the district. We really appreciate, uh, their assistance with the audit, uh, and looking forward to working with them again and, and having an audit in the spring, uh, getting back into the regular cycle, uh, which we think is fantastic. Uh, we'll confirm our independence, and do any other projects, uh, that, uh, with Village from, uh, the beginning of twenty twenty four, all the way through to today, that would impair our ability to give you an independent audit opinion. So I will stop there. Uh, I would be happy to answer the questions about the financial statements, uh, or the, uh, audit process.
All right, thank you, Corey. Uh, any questions, any counselors?
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, Corey. No questions, but thank you very much for all the work you've done, uh, Councilman McGlocklin and Adam.
Thank you, Mayor Barry. Uh, thank you very much for the presentation. Uh, when will council, uh, see the management audit letter, the company's the audit? And when will we council have an opportunity to speak with you without staff being present?
So the management letter, I think you answered the first part, counselor. The management letter is with staff in draft. Um, asking for them to provide their response, and then I will bring it to council. Uh, be happy to do that, based on, on, uh, staff providing their responses. And I am also happy at, you know, council choosing of the time, whether it's, uh, uh, when, whether you've got a full council or committee of the whole to attend again and give that opportunity foreclosed. Um, and it's, uh, at your discretion.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? No, uh, thank you very much, Corey. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, with that, we'll move on to ten point one point two, development variance permit application. Uh, Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you. The staff report is before you, that sets out all of the, uh, details associated with the request. In a nutshell, uh, there are two, um, variances requested. One is a front yard setback request, which is a reduction from seven point five meters to six point seven. And the other is a height request, uh, reducing the, or increasing the height by, uh, two point six meters. Uh, the rationale, uh, it's included in the staff report, as well as the applicant has provided that rationale that was included in the council package. So I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have. I'll also point out, as you well know, that the applicant is in the audience. Should you have any questions of the applicant?
Okay, uh, just before we, uh, go there, we'll move the motion. Motion is the council through the development variance permit four oh five. Maybe wrote as outlined in the application. Do we have a mover for that? So, by Councilman Brown, second it, Councilor Conlon, uh, discussion, questions?
True.
Councilor.
Uh, I'm really careful to make sure that I stay within my limits, so just, yes, think my way through this. So first of all, this is, Ross, you point out, give you two processes, is discretionary two of council. So by that, do you mean council makes this decision?
Correct.
Correct. Um, and then I, I noticed when I drove past, uh, Mr. Lee's house, that he's put up the board, uh, to saying that he's applied for development permit. And I, I assume that's up there for a certain time, I don't know how long, or how long it's been up for. Um, but I assume then they will, council will receive, um, any comments from, from the community. And. If you know. Yeah, sure.
Yeah, thank you. So any comments, uh, to be received were specified in, uh, I would have circulated to all residents within a hundred meters. Uh, any such correspondence would be included in the information package. To my knowledge, uh, nothing material, uh, was provided. And so what's in the package is.
Is the package.
So, Councilor.
So how long was the sign posted for? How much time do residents have to? Well, sorry, what's the purpose of the sign if if, if it's only residents who give it later, we get to comment.
Okay, that's Blackwell.
I think it's a really good question. Uh, some would, would argue it's overkill. Uh, the notion of the sign is to ensure that the community overall is aware of, of such applications. In this case, it comes with various private application. Uh, it serves no greater purpose really than the, than the people that are direct or directly affected. Uh, which are those within a hundred meters and even, even a hundred meters is can be a big stretch with regard to the impact on adjacent properties, depending on, uh, issues ahead.
It's a question differently. Isn't there prescribed time for the sign and how long is the sign going to be up for? Ten days?
Thanks.
So is, is there prescribed time? Is that, do we have to wait longer for council to get the signal? Or is it?
I think you'd note with the, uh, the timing is set out in bylaw and all of those provisions have been met.
Thank you, Councilor.
Sorry, just to point your, point on that, which, to your question, I think, all public input had to be provided by, by the deadline set out.
Okay, and that's passed.
Yes.
Okay, Councilor.
Um, here's a trip plot, so. And I understand this is a request for height variance. Um, to build the studio. And but in the application, um, the applicant, uh, provides a potential future use. Um, which is something that which is a carriage house, which is something that council have, I would say wrestle with in the past, uh, on the council before mine, when Mayor Burr was, was councillor. Um, and I, I think Kerry Charles, uh, dwelling over Gallow, which is one of the things that they kind of wrestle with, and I, I think that's why that height there, since they. Um, and other people have asked to do something similar, and we told them that in the past. I feel this is a, so I feel, and I know I'm maybe getting down, I feel this is a bigger, a bigger discussion that we should be resolving first. And the council should agree to what future development around this town should look like, and get that done. Um, without viewing this particular, um, application. I don't know if we can do that fast, I understand, application went in May, we now sit in September, it seems like an awfully long time. Uh, I, you know, I emphasize with all of that, but I think that discussion somehow, to me, needs to happen first. And also, as I mentioned to you earlier, um, I, as a lineman leading the local government act, it says that the variance permit cannot change density or use. And I can't, somehow I feel that's happened. Let you speak to that and.
Okay, um, Mr. Blackwell, and then we'll call a question.
Thank you, all really good questions. Let me start with the last ones first. So the proposal doesn't change the density, the residential's density stays the same. Uh, density is not defined by density on a single lot, density is prescribed over a larger area. Uh, number one. Number two, what was the other part of that? Density and use.
Says uses.
Right.
Change use.
Correct. And so the applicant is not changing use, it's an ancillary building utilized, gonna be utilized as, as set out in the application for personal uses as office space and whatever else. I, I think the initial thinking indicated that there might have been a desire to look at it for, uh, as an ADU, as an accessory dwelling unit. But, uh, the applicant has changed their position, given sort of the recognition of what's in the zoning bylaw. And, uh, wants to simply utilize that structure in accordance with the existing zoning, which permits this use. So, uh, now to your first point, uh, there's nothing really to resolve. It's a, it's a simple question. The use is, that's being, uh, proposed is permitted. If he could reduce the height and avoid that front yard encroachment, he wouldn't even be coming to council. Problem is, given the topography and the site challenges that he has to work with, he has to sort of approach a little bit in order to achieve that. But he's absolutely permitted and entitled to, uh, pursuant to the existing bylaw to build the structure for the purposes that he is suggesting now. And finally, uh, council cannot adjudicate a, a decision of this nature based on what it might think, what it thinks might happen in the future. You only judge an application based on what is before you.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carry. Okay, uh, next item is item ten point one point three, so Nice Policy Management.
This is yours? Yeah. Don't I get to speak?
Sorry, that's it, you're done?
I'm the neighbor. Oh, I'm the one staring at this, oh, monster thing. It seems like you forget about us back here while you're having your discussions.
Now, we, uh, well, Mr. Blackwell, do you want to outline the process here?
Sure, yeah, there is no opportunity for public input during a developed variance permit application or a, a developed permit application, which we don't have. Any input has to be done in accordance, still statute, right? This is not Ross's rules, this is a local government act. So we're required to provide notice. Residents are, uh, given a timeline to, to respond to. This is standard practice done across BC. Nothing special to mind. Um, the members of the public can also address council through the public input period if they so choose, but not during an application of this type.
I got a letter that said, come and speak your piece in the mail.
So I just asked the question, and I was told it was my objection, I didn't ask the question.
I got the same impression.
You said.
Canvas the neighbor, a hundred meters. Okay, Mr. Blackwell, um, please put your hand up if you want to speak, okay? Mr. Blackwell.
I don't know what more I can add. Uh, the, the public input was solicited, what we received back was included. Uh, and there's a say at the beginning of the. And as I say, at the beginning of the meeting in public input, there's the opportunity to participate. Other than that, these are not my rules. If you don't like the local government act, you have to petition the province B C. These are not my rules.
Okay.
I just, yeah, maybe say something just to, just to get on record. I know it's approved and all that. One of the things we struggled with was looking at the bylaw that was written in the F A R. If we were to join the structure to our house through a connected corridor, we would be in full compliance with the bylaw. Do not, we're not over height, we're actually under height. If I add my new corner elevations, I could actually probably add two feet to my house. So I just like, Danny, I know, like, when we talked about it, you felt the footprint was large. But it is fully within the bylaw in terms of thirty five percent site coverage. And I'm not encroaching on the side yard setback. So I just, I just wanted for that on record, just so that everybody's aware. Danny and I did have a chat about it. I did recognize it. You know, his house has been there for a long time, my house over here, and now I'm up to the, up to the side yard setback. So of course.
There's, it's more than that. There's two massive cedar trees that have been told we didn't lose them. And I don't even know whether they're, I think they're on my property.
I just want to survey it on our property. But my concern is that with the, with the foundation, we would actually impact the roots. And then if I impact roots on my side of the tree, they call the nurse. I say, I think that's the tree.
Okay, how?
So I lose the trees. I look out my, my window on that side of the house, at which I get sun from the morning till noon, and then it's coming around, right? Because it faces this east, right? The sun will be gone till noon on that side of my house, blocked right out. The trees will be gone. The beautiful green area, which is, I've got very little on that side of my house. I'll be staring from here to that wall out there to a massive wall of my, of my house. That's what I'll see. This is ridiculous that this can be allowed. It's a building, in my opinion, and we talked about this. He, I told him I had a problem with it, and he was so gracious. He said, tell me, then to say it, like no hard feelings. He was, you know, I was really appreciative of that. I didn't feel bad. But to lose all that, this structure, I looked at, it belongs at the works yard. It certainly belongs. It's, you could turn it into a house so big. And this is allowed? This doesn't fit into Lion's Bay. You can hear Michael longer than I have. I've never seen anything like this. And it's literally a warehouse, you know, with a couple of car spots. And, and it's just going to get blown through. I don't get to give an opinion or give reasons or and I got a letter saying, send the mayor an email, or if you don't want to do that, show up and have your say. And I show up and nothing. I don't understand.
Danny, apologies if you feel that you haven't been heard properly, but.
Well, I wasn't going to get hurt at all unless I spoke up.
Well, no, and, and we had the, the format to, to the agenda is speaking the two minutes at the beginning or a delegation of ten minutes. Or, and that's why I referred to Mr. Blackwell, the process of, of writing and speaking with the staff. This has gone through the process. What I, what I might suggest is.
I never heard a word about it until a week ago. And then I got a letter in the mail.
What I might suggest, and Mr. Black will help us out, is that you meet with staff and, and put some of your concerns out there. But in, for, as for the formalities of it, Mr. Blackwell has outlined that. And is there anything further that?
No, I mean, the key issue here is by and large, other than a few minor tweaks, this is your zoning bylaw. Council's zoning bylaw permits this. This is not contrary to zoning bylaws.
So what would you do if he said three stories? Let's build it three stories. Let's build it fifty feet in the air. Oh, wow. The bylaw says this. Go ahead. I don't understand. Like, we have no say anymore. Right? In the village. The people that live here. I sat here for whatever it is, an hour and a half, listening to, you know, passing this and passing that and passing this.
I, I, I'm gonna, I'll just, I'll just add the comments and Mr. Blackwell mentioned this earlier. Our bylaws and, and such, there's been many comments dating back to Tobin and other Lidstone and company and, and others that they need to be updated. But under the current bylaws, and, and Mr. Blackwell has encouraged council to move on and get moving on these bylaws, you know, make the changes that are necessary and such. But under the current bylaws, we've gone through this process and again, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the, the process is, is complied with everything. So.
So there's no height restrictions at all?
Again, there, there's a process and, and the bylaws are there, but many have commented that they need to be updated. Unfortunately, that hasn't taken place yet. Counselor Abbott?
So I don't think you explained it very well to Jim or Danny. I don't know. Council just voted to pass a variance to allow it to be above the height restriction. There is a height restriction. That's what happened.
I always thought there was there was a discussion to be made about these things, about the people that it affects, not your little world here. The actual people that live in Lion's Bay, and Michael talks quite a bit about that in all his comments today, about the people of Lion's Bay, the people of Lion's Bay. It doesn't seem like that's much of a concern in this room. You couldn't, I mean, just say it. We don't give a crap about you and your opinion. We passed it, you're done.
Well, say it. We have passed it, and we've been trying as a council to improve on these bylaws. And Mr. Blackwell repeats us every meeting that these bylaws need to be updated. Tobin, in the first three months, said the bylaws need to be updated. Lidstone said they need to be updated, but they are.
Municipal advisor said they need to.
But currently, and municipal advisor in the special report that was published, August thirty first. But currently, the point here is we've got a frustrated.
Counselor, kind of pointing a point to water.
We're completely at a fine here.
Yeah, Counselor Brown.
Could you make the, the, the letter that you received available to council? I think that would be helpful.
I think maybe I've still got to cross to see that, yeah.
Because the, 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 the fact is, is that border variance, though, there, there are variances. Yes, there's rules, there's rules, there's rules in place. But every time, but when, when you get the, the challenge of building in Lion's Bay, there are variances all over the place. And so, but, but you do need to be heard, right? And I understand that. You, my understanding, though, is that you have been given the opportunity to input. Okay, and whether that's been misunderstood or what, I, I'm not sure. But I'd like to see the letter because I'd like to better understand why, why you don't, you do not fill the other.
Then everybody would be.
I just need to see. We just need, we just need, we just need to see the letter. If we could see the letter, I think that would help us to understand and make sure that, that you've been, you know, that you've been fairly treated.
All right.
Amazing.
Okay.
Absolutely amazing.
Okay, we'll move to next item, ten point one point three, snow and ice policy.
Thanks for wasting a ton of my time.
Recommendations that council. Moved by Counselor McLaughlin, seconded. Discussion. Counselor Abbott?
Michael, you go first.
Yeah. We, I, I, I think, you know, we're, we're following recommendations of, of our, our council, our, our legal council, and definitely following a pattern that's required by the, by our insurance people to ensure that our bylaws are updated. And this is just one more, more example. So I fully support it. So we.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Abbott. Mr. Blackwell, and then we'll go to Counselor Abbott.
True. Counselor Abbott. So I understand this, everyone wants to change all our bylaws and it's kind of human nature in some ways. Everyone wants things to be a little different. And I understand the, the policy defense that we've been told about by staff several times. So fundamentally, I'm not opposed to making, making, uh, making this possible, producing a boss. What I am concerned about is the descriptive part about how the roads will be plowed. And I think that is actually achieving the opposite aim to what we're setting out to do. So I'll just recap. It talks about the roads around the highway and then bang up bay view towards mountain being the priorities. I can understand with an equal amount of snow on the ground, those would be a priority. To get to the school, you want to be able to get to various places. But everyone needs to keep in mind, my house is at two hundred and forty meters above sea level. I am in snow and more than two inches of snow frequently. And I phoned the workshop in the past and said, you guys know the snow, and tell them the snow stick, and they didn't even know the snow stick. It's happened many times to me and probably other people as well. I think the workshop, the power operator clearly uses, in my opinion, use their discretion. And they do a really good job. I think now telling them that they have to do things in a certain sequence, which includes clearing Lion's Bay Avenue before you clear upper streets in the village, with Lion's Bay Avenue is flat. And it, oh, half of it's flat, part of it's flat. So I, I, I just think we should change that part of it and, and leave the actual circumstances to dictate what order they clean the village. For very well to say, you know, we have a priority of that the big, the most traffic areas should be cleared first. That's fine. But leaving it that, not the second tier and the third tier, which I think those, many of us in the upper part of the village that aren't on one of the main roads are going to be sitting in snow because we, we only get plowed. I think the words were, if time permits, or we staff hours permit, or into that, would to that effect. I'd like to see it much as definitely.
Thank you, Mr. Blackwell.
Yeah, so just to put a finer point on this. So municipalities regularly get sued for all kinds of things. It keeps the municipal lawyers in nice pairs of shoes. Litigation is, is ubiquitous. Communities get sued for tripping hazards associated with sidewalks, tripping hazard associated with tree roots. Playground equipped that is, is failing to some degree or other. Slips and falls, so snow and ice clear. Trees is another one. The list is, is pretty broad. The litigation associated with this, and the cash awards could be in the millions of dollars. This question of how do, how do municipalities protect themselves, shield themselves against litigation? And this question in B C Supreme Court and B C Court of Appeal. And the metrics around how municipality do this have shifted over time. It used to be enough that so long as a municipality had a policy and they could show it was followed, it was enough. The courts now have moved beyond that. And they say it's not enough for municipalities to have a policy that has to be in a policy that's not the highest level, which is council. The courts have also specified that through their works, that with, if municipalities want to rely on what is referred to as the policy defense, which is basically if you put a policy in place, you have it approved by council, it sets the scope of what the expectations around whatever the issue is. And so long as the municipality is following that, then the municipality is shielded against litigation. There's no payout. So with regard to specifying order of clearing streets, that's a key part of it. It's not random, it's not on, it's not on somebody's opinion because that person's not a specialist. And they may, they may have imperfect information. The list that lawyers use is very long. So in order to shield against the accusations that that person made a bad judgment call, the ice was actually worse over here because it was underneath the snow, all kinds of things. How the municipality protects itself is by setting up the minimum or the, 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 the standard. If the municipality goes above beyond that, you know, harm the foul. But it has to document how at least that, these tests, including street prioritization. If it doesn't, we can get sued. It's as simple as that. So this is, in summary, a shield to protect taxpayers in Lion's Bay against litigation. In this case, should there be slips and falls and broken hips or cars that come off the road and hit somebody or something? This would, so why does municipality follows the parameters set out in here, we will be shielded.
Okay, Counselor Brown?
Just funny clarification. I think the Lion's Bay Avenue is plowed down over the railroad tracks. And then typically, my experience is, is that they typically will turn around after the railroad tracks move back up as a priori, priority. And then because, and they leave the flat part until they have time. So I, I think that's pretty much what happens through the community. So just, just.
Okay, Counselor Abbott?
But the railroad track is a very significant issue.
Ross has just said, we have to follow this priority. So it's no longer the case, Michael. Now they will do Lion's Bay Avenue first before they do in upper parts of the village. And they'll, they'll only start when they have two inches of snow. So if there is no two inches of snow at the highway, and I'm sitting in six feet of snow at the top of the village, priority one can start because there's no two inches of snow, no one getting plowed. Doesn't make sense the way it's written. We have to fix it. It says, snowplow will commence at approximately fifty centim, five centimeters. When, as it's one, and then it says, you'll start on the roads that probably don't have snow. We need to rethink this guy's, can describe it that way. This is setting us up to cause a problem.
Okay, Mr. Burr, you've got your hand up. Please join the table. And you authored this report. So we appreciate your input.
Thank you. So this report is based on a copious discussion of the people who do this. To address Counselor Abbott's point, snowplow starts on the street probably before it reaches five centimeters, two inches. The priority is only that priority, not an order. So if the street, that's a tertiary street that happens to have six feet of snow on it, it'll get dark before a street with one centimeter of snow. So you have wrongly ascribed the difference between priority and order. We can amend this policy anytime. It's not a three reading item. It's a one approval endorsement. As we can, for example, say Upper Lion's Bay Avenue, if that bothers you. The idea here is to try and alleviate people feeling that they need to call and tell us that it's snowing. When we are probably up at two o'clock in the morning watching the cameras, we know when it's snowing. We know probably three days before anybody else, when it's going to snow. We know. We pray months before the snow starts, starting two weeks hence, to fill the snow hopper, the salt hoppers up. They've been serviced since July.
Okay.
This policy is based on how we actually do it.
Mr. Burr, thank you very much for that detailed presentation. Okay, I'll call the, call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Opposed.
Okay. Counselor Abbott opposed.
I'm opposed because we don't want to change where it was probably made.
Okay, ten point one point four, tree management policy. Recommendation is that council approved the tree management policy. Do we have motion for that? Motion moved by Counselor McLaughlin, seconded, Counselor Brown, discussion.
Don't speak to this one.
Ms. Blackwell?
So this policy is also coming from the exact same place, informed by municipal, municipal insurance association B C, which is a municipal insurer who, they, they insure most municipalities. Tree management is another big source of litigation. And so what this does is sets a parameters around how the municipality will deal with issues pertaining to hazard trees. In other words, a municipality can remove them all if there's no budget to remove them all. So we have to have a way to say, this is how many we will remove. And if anything beyond that.
So we have to have a way to say, this is how many we will remove, and if anything beyond that happens, you can sue us. Uh, and that's the policy defense by setting sort of limits to how much should be done. The limits that are set out in this policy are primarily, they're referred to as uh budget is one of them. Uh, capacity, and so the, the one piece of capacity is the budget. We can only remove those that many trees that the budget can handle. And then, that's it for tree, for hazard tree removal. And in that scenario, as I've just said, if, if there is an issue related to a hazard tree that impacts property or life or injury, we're shielded against any litigation.
Hey, thank you, uh, Councilor Brown.
So in the case that we had a set budget for the year for dangerous tree removal and there was something that came to the attention of the village that was problematic, we would basically have a special council meeting and allocate more funds based upon the merit of the level of risk and.
Yeah, Mr. Blackwell.
Certainly, if, if the budget's been completely committed, that's what they have a thousand dollars, let's say. Uh, that wouldn't even do one thing, but whatever.
Yeah.
Small amount. And that was exceeded and then came to council's attention and there's some really pressing issue. It's not that we can just, council has the choice to go, nope, we're protected, you can do that, that's fine. Or you can say, no, let's, let's go above and beyond that and let's just do something a bit extra. Uh, you, you can do that without, uh.
Amending the matter?
Yeah, without uh, uh, invalidating the policy.
Hey, any other questions?
Thank you, Mary, uh, from Mr. Blackwell. And I'm looking for a spot on answer for kind of a, a lay of the land here. Uh, in the, certainly in this year, there has been, budgets been used, trees been cut, trees been cut during the bird nesting season. Not a good thing. That's why we have a bird nesting policy. And so question is, on this particular one, for the next one, is that the trees have been there for some time, I don't think we just found them, unless something's just occurred in a windstorm. Are we going to adhere to our own policies? That's the one question, I'll go with next one.
Can I answer that one first?
Sure.
Mr. Blackwell, thank you.
Uh, so litigation life safety has to trump tree, uh, bird policy. Uh, go trees that were removed during the nesting season and Mr. Burr can speak to this. Uh, were deemed to present risk to infrastructure or life safety. How this happens is very much like by law enforcement. Once it's reported by the public, we have a legal obligation to investigate. And at the end, the conclusion of that investigation, there's a decision made as to whether or not it meets the test. It doesn't, it's done. If it does meet the test, it's, it's dealt with.
All right, so insured, bird nesting season, give the hazard, down it comes.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, I drew a river with that question and this will be my last question, Mary Byrne, is that um sometimes the public's not happy with that decision. Where is there opportunity to address that? And I think we've just seen an example of somebody who didn't feel hurt.
Mr. Blackwell.
Uh, the type we're addressing that is through bylaw preparation or policy development, et cetera. Once those things are done, staff execute them according to what's set out. So the work that's being done follows the provisions that we have. Uh, the trees you're referring to uh that were cut down in this year and uh, nesting season, redeem hazard to infrastructure. They had, as I say, beyond that, once they're identified and deemed a risk, uh, we could choose not to do anything about it, but then we risk being sued. So if somebody gets killed from a tree falling, you can all guess what sort of price tag would the municipality would be on hook for now. They have a kicker in this, although we can rely on MIAPC to protect us, that's not sort of carte blanche. So if they perceive us not doing what we need to do to fulfill our legal responsibilities around this or any other issue, maybe playground equipment, whatever. Uh, they will come to bat the first time, but they will cut us loose thereafter and then we're on the hook for paying our own, all costs.
Thank you very much. Thank, any other comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, Councilor.
I think a lot more thought needs to go into this. Um. So when nesting season aside, there are other things in here that um just make it far too loose. So for example, we describe a hazard tree um as a tree of a structural defect that's likely to fail and cause damage to property or injured people or, or in proximity to high tolls. And we have a, we have used several certified al- albers in the past, we have one we frequently use now and it seems to be getting most of the village work and I think she does a fine job. Very detailed reports as to how, how you uh qualify or quantify what is a hazardous tree. Three different tables, likely with consequence and not by the other, that comes up with an answer. Um, all the trees that you referred to, we would, or the one tree we referred to earlier that was dangerous, that came down um had a risk of moderate limb failure. Used to use the words um imminent danger, and we don't, we're not using that anymore. And that's probably a better way of describing it because on every table, there's also imminent risks. And those are the trees that this policy should have noted. The other problem we've got is, it also says the qualified individual can make this decision is an alberis certified by the International Society of Albiculture. Great, that's the person we're looking for, but then it's got a comma, all professional, sorry, all forestry professional or other appropriate trained and experienced person, that can be anyone. And then later down, um, it talks about public works, carrying out treatment, tree inspections and doing maintenance. I think this policy needs to be um rethought, it needs to be far more prescriptive as to what constitutes a dangerous tree. I think it needs to refer to the ISA alberis tables of what they, how they qualify it, um, not some other subjective decision. And I think until we do those things, this is going to be very problematic because you can have all kinds of residents that are saying, hey, I'm a qualified professional friend of mine and said that tree's dangerous, please take it down. You're gonna have this, this is going to open us up, opening us up to a lot of cost and a lot of liability. So I think it needs to be.
Mr. Blackwell.
So this actually does the opposite of what you just said. Uh, what this does is set the maximum threshold to liability and cost. So if council says we're going to put a five thousand dollars a year for, for tree management budget, that those, that's all that gets cut. And if something else happens to somebody's house or car or pedestrian or whatever, we're shielded. Uh, but the problem that, that sits down without this policy, we have to cut down every tree that's reported that presents a hazard, every tree, so that could be two hundred. We are legally required to cut those down. Now, this is not my opinion, and giving you the expert advice from MIAPC and from Listone. And you know, and my strong recommendation is please listen to the experts and stop replacing the expert's opinion with, you know, local ones. Uh, my goal here is not to protect the trees as a priority. My goal is to shield the people against damage or death. My goal here is to shield the municipality against litigation and enormous costs of, of, of tree removal. And uh, uh, it would be remiss of me if I was to pretend that the risk was any less than significant. And to be clear, a lot of these trees are fir trees, which are, 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 they naturally prune themselves. Some of these, as you well know, some of these branches are enormous. And if they, so, so part of the danger tree assessment is not only is, is the tree diseased or damaged, but the other part is, is there a target in proximity? Meaning if a branch comes off, can it do harm? And so those are the two pieces that come together. So if you don't have this, every day you don't have this in place, we are vulnerable as a municipality for all those reasons.
Okay, Counselor Abbott, I'll come back to you one more time, second time speaking, then we'll call the question.
Ross, I heard several times you say I'm not listening to you, you clearly didn't listen to me. I did not ask to remove this policy. I asked, we tighten up this policy by making it only the certified albers according to their regulations that can decide if a tree's hazardous. That's what I'm suggesting to you, I'm suggesting we tighten this policy. So don't turn it around and say that I'm trying to put people at risk. And as to your, yes, limbs full of trees, that is a risk that everyone experiences in Lions Bay. Every tree would come down if that was a risk. Read the alberis reports, they do not tell you to remove trees just because a limb can come down in a storm, they never do that. I don't refer to the expert, let the expert decide and not or any other appropriately trained, experienced person.
Okay, Counselor Abbott. Councilor Brown?
You know, I think we, we need to look at a reasonable balance. I mean, uh, I was referred to a mother, five month old child killed by falling tree on Vancouver Island. Uh, that was, I'm not sure the exact date, but that was recently over the summer. And you know, we have situations of uh, January the second, twenty twenty two, Mike and Caroline Sharp, tree balls on the west Vancouver, December fourteenth, December seventh, uh, January twenty eighth, these are, these are recent events that we have to take um reasonable responsibility, right? We cannot cut every branch and cannot cut every tree. But if there are any indicators that, and, and we have, and, and I do, and I respect the fact that it should be somebody who who definitely knows what they're doing, making these recommendations. But I, I think that we need to ensure that we have the funding in place that's required to try to ensure the maximum amount of safety for our residents because these things do happen. And these, these are just incidents in the last six to eight months to two years in, and within a hundred kilometers of, of our Lions Bay.
Ross, can you just confirm, uh, we've had legal opinions that, that provide the CAO with the authority to remove trees that are a danger to life residents?
Based on the existing bylaw, that provision exists.
Exists. And trees that have been identified that are outstanding as a risk to, of death, the potential residents of ours, you have the authority to remove those. What I'm also hearing though is, is you're saying if council gives you zero bud- budget, does that remove your responsibility or does that then put council in position that they're obstructing uh, the law?
Uh, it'd be, well, with, with zero budget, uh, the court would assess it from two legal principles. One is fairness and the other is reasonableness. So they would look at Lions Bay and the, uh, the litigating lawyer, make all sorts of ass, uh, points about the size of the budget and zero dollars is unreasonable relative to the risk. And I suspect in that zero budget scenario, a Lions Bay will come out very courtly. Uh, so some budget is an obvious thing, but council gets to set whatever that right budget amount is and staff works up to that, so there may be a.
I guess I'm asking the question, he, he, if you have trees that are a risk to life and you have the authority to remove those and you haven't removed those, does this bylaw now supersede what you already are aware of? And is outstanding?
So they said, no, uh, these, these two things sort of work together. What this basically does is say, uh, whereas right now, the, the bylaws that currently exist create some legal obligation to take down every tree that's deemed risky. Okay, that's our legal responsibility. We can choose to ignore our legal responsibility, but that can come at a cost. The other approach is to say, let's put a limit on that exposure and we're going to set a maximum number. But if they get reported, we will take down, run through a value, up to this value, no more. And then if there's another tree that falls and does whatever damage beyond that, we should not, in theory, be able to suit.
I'll call the question, all in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, next item is the ten point one point five garbage recycling collection bylaw. Uh, and the recommendation is that council grant the first and second reading to the garbage and recycling bylaw four fifty five, twenty thirteen amendment bylaw number six fifty two, twenty twenty five. We have motion moved by Counselor McLaughlin, seconded.
Seconded.
By Counselor Abbott, discussion.
Did you want to name the due services?
Sure, um, Mr. Blackwell, give us some background on this.
Sure, and uh, our bylaw enforcement officers here who should be able to contribute to. Uh, so this is the result of a resolution that council passed uh in July, uh, which effectively uh requested that various revisions be made to the bylaw to address a number of, of issues. Uh, we took it with that, we had conversations, we tried to find the middle ground on this, these, these revisions. Uh, the revisions, I would say, fall into two, two batches. I'll start with the easiest batch. The easiest batch is those revisions that tighten up the language, like, make the language read better, work better, function better. Uh, I've also proposed a number of additional provisions in the bylaw to sort of flesh out some, some holes, some uh missing teeth in the smile, so to speak, in the bylaw. And makes it a bit more robust and complete. That said, there are many more revisions that need to happen, this is just a, a deep dive into this one section. The other basket of revisions deals with sort of this ongoing concern about high wildlife management uh periods and versus low, uh, low activity periods. Uh, we're proposing that those be removed and it could be a year, a year round standard. Uh, this is where the, uh, accounts, the discussion can get sort of a bit more complicated and that is, what is the right time for that? Uh, staff have included for your consideration the notion that if bear resistant garbage cans are acquired from the municipality as an idea, then um maybe people can then put out their waste earlier in, in the morning than, than whatever, seven thirty. If it's five or five thirty, if they utilize those uh containers. That initiative or that idea is suggested to address the concerns of those folks that for a myriad of reasons, don't feel that they are easily able to uh get their garbage to where it needs to go because of work commitments. So this is an idea to sort of try to bridge that and find middle ground. Um, but this is up to council to debate. Uh, Mr. Burr deals with this also quite regularly and so you have two other staff people that can weigh in on some of this nitty gritty. Unfortunately, there's no right answer with this, that every solution has its pros and its cons. Uh, this is staff's sort of best effort to try to find that middle ground, as I say. And so with that, I'll turn it over to uh, Mr. Bender, Mr. Burr, for any additional input.
All right, gentlemen. Yeah.
I'll go, I'll go ahead and talk, so.
Josh, if you want to come up as well, you can grab a chair. Just one of our new side there, yeah.
So um, as Ross currently says, uh, we're, we're trying to come up with a pragmatic understanding of how we can serve solid waste in the village. Um, I, I think uh, being the person that deals with a lot of my garbage wasn't picked up calls on Friday and dealing with uh, with the hauler uh on, on a probably five times a week basis. Um, we've been thinking about this for quite a long time. The proposition is that we now allow clipped garbage bins uh after five o'clock like it used to be. Are they bear proof? No, they are bear resistant. Um, depending on the size of the bear, they might get it open. Uh, I know that the bear hasn't managed to get my bear resistant can open in ten years, they've tried. Um, we can stipulate, specify a garbage can, the, the size that's this one, the seventy gallon size is two, is a hundred and ninety eight dollars uh, or in bulk. Um, the small one for compostables, which you also have to now be bear resistant. If you want to put that stream out, curb side at five o'clock. We're still trying to identify one of those. Right now, the solution is to get another, another one of the seventy gallons for your compostables. Food scraps, uh, we're trying to come up with some consistent language in the bylaw because it's used quite a change a bit between yard waste, food scraps, compostables, green waste, so we standardize all of that. Um, we have. Um, we have five curbside streams, landfill garbage, compostable.
So green waste.
That's compost.
Yeah.
Glass, sack containers, cord, carbon fiber, thank you, five. Uh, the recyclable pieces, I'll just point out to you, are required to be collected, because curbside by our contract with the recycle DC. So the proposition is, uh, give this one for the two, one, one or two readings. Let us find out a little bit more information on if we can get a smaller compostables can, bear-proof. Waste controls are reconfirmed that they're willing to take them clipped, curbside. We think this will actually solve most of our issues. I also point out that if we do this, we can cease the Friday and Sunday drop-off at the yard. Because everybody will have the opportunity to put their garbage out in it.
And, uh, Josh?
Yeah, I think as Ross mentioned, this is, uh, this is the middle ground that we found. Um, again, it's not all residents that, uh, have issues putting up their garbage, um, at their time slot, but for those that aren't able to, uh, in the last few weeks, I've had dozens of people, um, come up to me. Um, and so for those that can't, they have the option of buying this, um, clipped, um, bear-resistant bins, um, and that should help solve the issue here.
Okay, uh, any counsel, uh, Mr. Blackwell, I'm going to go to counsel, then counsel out.
Just a couple of other, uh, points for council's consideration. Don't forget that these things are never carved in stone. So if councils are so minded to approve these revisions and if council feels that further tweaks or revisions are necessary, it can always occur. The other piece I didn't put in here, uh, that council could consider is some sort of community conversation around this. Now, you may feel that that's already been done. But what is known is known. It's another, we didn't put it in here for that reason, but it's something that council could consider, because council is so minded.
Counselor Brown?
In terms of the, uh, if you have a clipped bin, then seems you, if you've met that criteria, is, is there a requirement that you have a permit to have a clipped bin? Did I read that into the Bible?
So if I can speak to that?
Yeah.
That was, that was mooted and it's unnecessary. So we took it out.
Okay, thanks.
If It's, it's gonna be an approved bin. We will actually have our logo, uh, hot stamped into it. So it's not just something you order from depot. It's gonna be the right bin. If it's clipped, it's good enough.
Hey, Counselor Abbott.
Um, cause a couple of questions on, on the clip bins, so the, the Roland style bins that you, you have, which I have, um, are bear-resistant and we have evidence, the one, the office one, but they took to the forest and managed to break into. Or managed to break out, break all the plastic, it couldn't get past the metal strip on the outside, which largely left it intact, so you probably couldn't have got what you wanted in the box. So that metal strip on the outside, that's the key part. And other people have the other, um, wire clip bins that don't have the metal strip in other municipalities. And they're reporting problems with the best getting into it easily. Now, in animal, the Roland style ones, every resident has to buy their own bin. Um, and they have to buy that style of bin and they're two hundred and forty dollars. So are you suggesting we get the same ones for fifty bucks less?
They are the same as animal's, uh, which is just have to buy a hundred.
Okay. Fair enough. Okay, so I like the price point. I just want to make sure we have the right bins. Okay.
Hey, any other comments?
Yes, another comment. So the recommendation, um, from the Besmart team, as well as what went out in the village update from, from staff, was that the early drop-off was seven o'clock, not five o'clock. Um, so that's, um, it's five o'clock. In the Bible, that was not what was asked for, not, not was in the previous version. We asked it to be seven o'clock. I think we should consider reconsider that. Um, and it's seven o'clock, there's a half hour, um, which gets you to six thirty. I mean, maybe we're splitting hairs here. Um, that, uh, the person's been most involved with Besmart who is adamant that this, the biggest change happens when they stop five o'clock, put out back in two thousand and ten, when they got the best one status, that was the key thing. It had to be more than seven and not five. So it has that, that to be reconsideration.
Yeah, so, uh, I'm aware of that, uh, the five o'clock put out before was non-badrift or non-bear resistant. That was just trash. And of course, they gave the bears something between two and four hours to get it to trash. This is different in that it's now bear-resistant cans put out at five. We know from discussion with four to five dozen people, seven o'clock is too late for a lot of linesways. They had to leave before seven o'clock. It's always been five. Five is the time that's been set to be efficient for when people wanted to put out their trash. We live in that country. We need to do that in various, this is a bit. And I would go so far as to say that the right, the, the Roland's kind with the metal strip on the top is as close to bad proof as you can get. They can't, they can rip the thing to shreds, not mine handles anymore, but they haven't gotten it. And I, I think this is a good. This is switch to a lot of problems that I'm sure you've all seen. Social media, the hearing that we've been hearing in the street, that, that I hear from the carrier. This will actually address just about everything, if you believe the best cannot get into the approved bins.
Okay, I'll call a question.
Sir?
Okay, final, final comment, and then we'll call the question.
Um, I just wanted to touch on, you said something about ceasing drop-off at the yard. Um, don't forget, there's more than one reason to drop off at the yard. We, we now have a, a community recycling depot, um, so hopefully we're gonna keep that intact. Uh, and this was just being able to double up on it. Um, you know, I'll leave very much.
Okay, we're gonna go around the table once and then we'll call the question.
Thank you. Firstly, I greatly appreciate staff blacklining, so we can see what the differences are versus seeing the firm print. Uh, the second
There's two things on their blacklining and metallics.
Thank you. I, I appreciate staff double down, down, doubling down for my ease. Uh, my comment is, I appreciate that we're building a model for everybody. Uh, and everybody who you can't please all the time, because the people who are seven are desired as the sweet spot to the people who are in town. Because they don't want to get up better, like, or too late, and stuff like this. So we get retirees that don't want to do it. So, long story short, what I'm saying here is that nobody, everybody's gonna convert to the times, because their times are just right. So I don't think we're gonna get a village full of common cans, um, but I'm in favor of where this is going. And to me, I'm very supportive of pushing this through a couple of readings, or one at least. Uh, what I would do in the spirit of that is that the section on page fifty-six of a hundred, which refers to fines. If you thought we had some letter, some abuse on morning letters to see that we're gonna put a two thousand dollar fine at the outside. Gee, I wouldn't put that in the client survey to the village. So I would suggest that for the time being, I'm happy to go forward with the, with the motion striking out the part uh, to do with the fines, which I can look at this, which fifty-six. Thank you very much, Mr. Burr, and, and have that as something in the background. I don't think our village is up to that just yet. And I, it, if we're actually gonna walk the talk, somewhere it's gonna happen. But in terms of moving this along, I think that's the right thing to do. And before Mr. Blackwell speaks, I would say this is a very good piece of legislation moving us in a very good direction.
Hey, Mr. Blackwell.
I think it's just for clarification through, uh, to counsel McLaughlin, are you saying remove all fines or reducing it back to a thousand dollars?
I would remove all fines of this. I find if, uh, if Mr. Burton's neighbor would find it just as egregious to get a thousand dollars.
Okay, the motion on the table is to remove the fine. Uh, do we have a second for that? Then we can discuss it. Do we have a second? Okay, second, Counselor Abbott and, uh, Mr. Blackwell.
Thanks. So, uh, one of the deficiencies that, uh, Mr. Bender was experiencing was the inability to enforce the bylaw. So if we remove the fine provision, which is a toothless bylaw, there's no point in bothering with the bylaw. So there has to be, it's always been a thousand dollars. Uh, the, the things have changed. Uh, we, we can actually, uh, ticket up to ten thousand dollars, but, uh, in terms of what's permitted, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying, that's the range. Two thousand is consistent with, I think, the district of North Vancouver. Uh, and that the intention of, of ticketing is when it, there's an egregious situation, nothing else is worked. And there needs to be a fallback. It needs to be enough of a incentive, which without, with regard to being a fallback, that it has the desired effect. It's not that Mr. Bender would be out there with this ticket, but flipping two thousand dollar tickets. That would be, as they say, the last resort. But it's important to have something that has some teeth.
Hey, uh, Counselor Brown?
Um, I, I think it's, it's, I totally agree, uh, Counselor McLaughlin, I think that, that, um, at, at this stage at least, I think we need to be looking at, uh, seeking as much cooperation as we possibly can. And, uh, I think, um, increasing the fine structures doesn't, doesn't, it will not be helpful.
Okay, I'll, I'll just comment, maintaining it is. I agree with, uh, Counselor McLaughlin. I think, um, you know, the carrot would do better than the stick. And, uh, I think, uh, I'm not for this, this sort of, uh, police, what I view as, as over-policing and being very punitive and, and pitting uh, residents against residents.
Yeah.
Uh, reporting residents, uh, people driving around or social media shaming people. I don't think that helps our village. So I, I, I'm hearing Mr. Blackwell. Uh, it sounds like the zero may not work, but perhaps another number in that slot.
Me, that fines, and then we can deal with fines in the fees section that we're going to be talking about subsequently. So just keep a number of them all together.
Agreed. Okay, uh, Counselor Abbott, then we'll call the question.
So we, I, no, no, you can't have a bottle without a fine. It doesn't exist. There's no point in writing a Bible. It has to have a fine. Every Bible has a fine. I, I, I don't believe in increasing it. Um, I have the same comment. Why haven't we increased it? And a thousand dollars should be plenty enough deterrent, and there's only very few people you're gonna have to use it for. Probably never. But if you don't have a fine, you don't have a Bible, so that's a little pointless.
Okay.
Um, I, there was one other, one, you know, one other bit of wording, um, in section sixteen, just need to really, really it's solid waste and recycling only may be provided at the public workshop. It, it needs to be some claim of changing that. That doesn't make sense.
And, um, Counselor McLaughlin, you have your hand up.
Thank you. There's three readings to this. I don't think we have to put anything here. I just leave it blank for now.
Okay.
Leave it as it is.
Okay. So leave it, and so are you withdrawing your motion? Is that, your motion was to eliminate the, uh,
Well, okay.
Technically, I could, we could strike it, or just leave it blank for the time being.
Leave it fine. Okay, uh, so that was a motion that you put forward. All in favor?
Leave the fine amount blank, is that right?
And, and we'll do the reading.
So if council's so minded to take the fine amount out, then if you want to be professional about doing this properly, then just kill the Bible. It's the point having, it doesn't do anything. And if there's no enforcement.
I think we're Counselor McLaughlin, do you want to put a number in there, a smaller number that I, that I think that's what you're getting at?
It has to be meaningful. It can't be insignificant. Um, so it goes to five hundred bucks.
Okay, counsel come up.
I was just gonna suggest that we leave it at the existing thousand dollars, because that's what it's been in.
Okay, we have a motion forward with five hundred dollars. All, uh, so we'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, um, and now we'll go back.
Sorry, can you vote in favor?
And so now we'll go back to the original, uh, motion. Uh, no further comments. All in favor?
Hi. Yes.
Closed, motion carried.
So if I can just clarify, that's first and second reading.
Yeah.
First and second.
So what fine?
And
Yeah, of course, that's the first. Yeah.
That's good work. Okay, next, uh, item is ten point one point six, garbage recycling, uh, this for information, uh, over you, via the findings. Uh, did we want, uh, Taj, can you give us a little feedback on this?
Yeah, I can just, uh, send a nutshell. Um, so there's a, a garbage collection audit, uh, carried out in, June and in July, the first one being, uh, June nineteenth, which is a Thursday, from ten P M to eleven P M. Uh, and Friday, June twentieth, uh, from six A M to eleven A M. The second one being, uh, a month later, uh, July seventeenth, which fell on the Thursday, same time, ten to eleven. And Friday, July eighteenth, same time, six to eleven. Um, so the first one, uh, audit one, uh, in June, uh, there was five households, uh, that put their garbage out. Um, the night prior, Thursday. And then going on to Thursday, the, in terms of the collection schedule, there was a total of thirty-nine households. Um, and then that brings us to the second one. Uh, second one, there was two houses, uh, that placed their garbage, uh, the night prior. And fifty-six houses that didn't adhere to the schedule on the Friday. Uh, when you look at, uh, what neighborhoods, um, were most, um, failed to comply the most. Um, I with, from direction from, uh, Councilman McLaughlin, I, I kind of put together, um, the stats with, uh, the timing. So there was, uh, seven thirty to nine A M. There was, uh, out of the forty-four households in audit one, there was uh, eighteen percent, uh, came from the seven thirty, um, collection time. Seven percent being from the nine o'clock and seventy-five percent being the ten, ten A M time slot. Uh, and then audit two, there was, um, uh, thirteen percent for the seven thirty. Um, thirty-six percent for the nine o'clock one and fifty percent for ten o'clock one. Um, for the two audits, there was a total of ten households that, um, were given a letter after the first audit and failed to abide during the second audit. So there was ten houses there. Out of those ten houses, um, one of the households were set in seven thirty time slots. Uh, another house in the nine o'clock time slot and eight houses in the ten o'clock um, time slot. And again, uh, just going off these numbers, it's clear that it's the, the ten o'clock time slot that's, um, having the toughest time. Um, and that's that's, um, something we've noticed greatly here, and that's been largely the feedback we've been getting. It's from residents that, that fall under that ten, ten o'clock time slot.
Hey, Counselor Abbott.
Um, yeah, thanks for this, Taj. Um, was it the way you were doing it that I, uh, I'm giving you that, because it gives us some statistics and response statistics. Um, counsel, as I understand, putting the point for me was of the repeat offenders, one was in the seven thirty time slot. So we've been, we're going on about, you know, whether it should be seven o'clock or five o'clock as a concern for people that are going to work early. That is not where the issue is. This clearly says that's not where the issue is. The biggest issue is, I think, is fear that they put their bins out too late and they miss the collection. Several people have expressed that. That we need to work on that, that fear. And waste collection services have said if they're early, they'll stop the truck, they'll come back, but they need that feedback. Um, and those are the people that are only violating the, the bylaw because of the fear they're gonna miss the track. Not because they're not prepared to do it, because they're going out half an hour before ten o'clock. Right? And that's, and that's where the risk is. So I think really does demonstrate, uh, we, we all being focused on people going to work early. That's not where the concern is. That's like half a percent of the population.
Uh, going off the feedback that we received, uh, in the last month, I want to say eighty percent of them had to do with, um, people, whether it be the nine o'clock or the ten o'clock, not being able to abide due to, uh, work. Um, work was one of them. Their kids was another.
Appointments.
Yeah, appointments was another. Um, and that, that's just the feedback that we received. Um, and so I'm, I'm just kind of forwarding that information to, to you guys. I, I've, I've also told all these, um, individuals to, to ensure that, that they're emailing council, uh, regarding this and bring up their concerns to council. Uh, so I'm not sure how many, uh, correspondence we got regarding this, uh, this audit that was carried out, but that was something that was, that was suggested as well.
Okay, uh, as far
Yeah, so just sort of correct, uh, uh, logic error there. Um, the, the the people who are not making the ten o'clock clock time slot are the ones who potentially go, need to go to work at six thirty. So you can't assume that, that their slot would have been seven if they didn't have to go to work. It's the people who
It's the people who can't make ten o'clock. What's interesting to me is that they can't make drop off at the R D R. We start on Friday at six o'clock. So either that's that's even too late for them, or they don't want to put trash in their car.
So I would say it's both.
No, it's gonna be it's gonna be.
Residents, I'm I have to be there. Leaving house six thirty. Residents uh don't want to put garbage in their car because it leaks all over the site.
It's terrible.
You know, our family takes a lot of things directly to the dump and it makes a mess.
But I have I've not used garbage pickup since I went back to work. You guys will tell you I'm gonna be either Friday or Saturday morning. My garbage is in a bag. I put it in the cab. I know, but pick up. I could put it in the back of the pickup truck. I put it in the cab. It's never leaked once. Um and there are lots of residents that use that service. And there are a lot of residents that use that service and do not want to go back to their side. But so please keep that intact. There are plenty people that use it. They're regulars. You guys in the workshop will know. You can get to know the workshop, the dog and everyone. And they are regulars. They're down in the water. Um and and I.
We don't have dogs around, but.
Here's that's not a lot.
It's one to wait for treats from someone that comes on Friday morning.
So yeah, if I can just. We're not proposing to remove the service because we're using the recycling depot anyway. So we're there. And we're very happy to take trash that is not exposed to theirs.
Okay, uh thank you very much, Taj, and uh. Okay, uh next item. Banking resolution ten point one point seven recommendation motion is that Ross Blackwell, Joe Chirkoff, Karen Jeffrey be added to banking signatures. Or you add. Okay, second. All right, discussion.
Question.
All in favor?
Hi.
You.
Close, motion carried. Thank you. Uh next item was the zoning and development by law five twenty twenty seven. Uh recommendation that council grant first and second reading to the amendment by law number six fifty to amend section seven point seven point two of the zoning development by law. Number five twenty twenty seventeen as follows, where a parcel has. A rear yard parcel line abutting in the ocean or abutting in municipal esplanade, abutting in the ocean. Setback averaging shall apply only to the parcel line facing the ocean. And. That council direct staff to Greece to schedule a public hearing for amendment by law number six fifty twenty twenty five in accordance with the requirements. Of the local government act. Okay, um do we have a motion left? Moved by Council McLaughlin, seconded. We have a second, Councilor. Okay, uh discussion. And this is the uh. Comments from Russ Micklejohn in the two minute session.
Would you like me to introduce it?
We'll go to uh Mr. Blackwell to accompany that Council McLaughlin.
Could I just clarify something first? So there's. Is there a front yard setback as well as where we are? There's not one.
Let's let's let Mr. Blackwell um give a introduction here and a little bit of background, then we'll come to questions. Okay, Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you. So the issues around this amendment stand out in the staff report. The issue is that the the section of the zoning by law refers to properties having two front yards. Which is not legal. It has no basis in law. And so we could get a little penny just in case there's something or something changed. Whatever. Turns out, no, nothing changed. You can't have two front yards. Front yard is defined legally as those sections, portions of the property that front a road. So that has to be changed. We can only have a front yard. A side yard, an interior or exterior side yard, under rear yard. Those are your only options. How this bylaw had been applied, however. Let me back up. What it what the what the language should have referred to is not two front yards with respect to uh averaging. It should have referred to that regard averaging as the rear yard. Uh not the front yard. The reason is, in part, because that is how the bylaw has been applied all these years. So Mr. Butler has always applied. That standard. He's called the front facing, the ocean facing portion of the property front yard, but incorrectly. Not as a fault of his own, but because of the language of the bylaw. So we need to fix it. You heard from Mr. Micklejohn. He is. An application uh uh sort of that sort of triggered this, even though he may not in fact be impacted by this. But but the reality is, as I say, the language. It's inaccurate. It's problematic. It was needs to to refer to a rear yard. That addresses rear yard averaging on the oceanfront side, which is what the intent of the bylaw was, even though it wasn't written correctly. And so he's been applied that way. So this is, I would suggest essentially just administrative correction. And nearly nothing more with regard to changing the path.
Okay, Council McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor Barry. Uh I was gonna pull this. I put forward to pull this. I took it back. Uh appreciating staff situation. I could go first and second reading, but I would be going to going to the public after that. I'd like to have a committee to hold. Clearly, we can't ask all the questions we want today. So if uh that would push the item forward, I think. You know, staff always keeps throwing these quirky balls that are kind of what I was like this one is when a house is under construction right now. I mean, they want to conform. I get it. So I don't push staff on. I think. With the many, many pages of this change, I've got some questions to ensure that, you know, the quirkiness of uh Prince of Peach hasn't got caught into this. And we're solving one problem to open another challenge.
Okay, and the comments, Councilor Abbott.
Yeah, um. One part of it's confusing. So. If you have the front yard setback averaging rule applies to Lions Way Avenue as it does everywhere else. And if, for whatever reason, some person decided to redevelop their lot on Lions Way Avenue. And didn't like being near the ocean for whatever reason, and they put it up next to the street. That means that anyone on either side of it could not build on the waterfront. They'd all have to build on the street because the front yard averaging rule would say. You have to be the average of your two names. So you'd actually force everyone away from the waterfront. That, to me, sounds like a problem that we need to address before we pass this. Not saying it's likely, but what if it did happen?
Hey, Mr. Blackwell.
So the way this will function now is. Basically, all this is doing is leaving all the language the same. And it's removing one of the ref. There's two references to front yards, right? The one front yard is correct, which is that 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 fronts the road.
The road yard.
And then it refers to another front yard, which is that section of the land that fronts the ocean. Can't call that front yard. So we're just basically switching up the word front with rear. So. It's a rear yard averaging for those for those uh houses that are placed closer to the waterfront. They have to find the average between their their neighbors. That's how it's always been applied. It's gonna continue. There's no change to that. It's just simply changing the words that it reads correctly from.
But don't you also need to make provision that there's no front yard averaging in those circumstances? Otherwise, what I'm describing will mean people will have to move their house up to the street.
And Mr. Blackwell, now go to Council Brown.
Good question. Front yard averaging doesn't exist. It's only rear yard averaging in this case.
There is no front yard.
But but as it stands now, what you say would absolutely.
So there's two changes there.
Uh it's only referring, yeah, the intent is that it refer that the language be changed to do what has always been done.
I'm good with the principle. I think you need to go back and look at it in the way it's worded. The other thing is the amendment reads section seven point seven two zoning by law is amended by deleting. The base density parcels created by subdivision shall be a matter of one person, one parcel per eight kilometers. I think that's a mistake.
Very well.
On page sixty seven.
I don't recognize that.
No, I think someone quoted seven point two point two instead of seven point seven point two.
Check that, because that doesn't uh I don't recognize that.
And that is about the size of a parcel that can be subdivided. And it's meant to be eight thousand square meters, not eight thousand meters, eight thousand, eight kilometers. There's a there's a technique. It was just a type idea.
Yeah, it's a house level check.
Any state here.
Yeah.
Council Brown.
Um this front and rear, I mean, if we're saying it's a special, it's a special circumstance. For ocean side, for the ocean side of the property. Is that correct?
Correct. Nothing new.
Could we use the word ocean side?
That's.
It does say that.
Facing the ocean.
Yeah. So just to clarify, the ocean we.
What we're talking about our rear part.
Like anyone else on the road has a backup.
Where the parcel has a rear yard that is abutting the ocean.
The only time it could be there. It would be different if it had no road access and you had to fly in or hike in or whatever, then. That it's not defined in the same conventional way. But if there's a road there, the front yard is on the road.
And just a technicality. So we're doing two readings and then you're going to have a public uh session, which Mr. Micklejohn could come to and others. And a public hearing and sort through some of these questions and clarify and so on before we have the third and final reading.
Question. If I could, uh so public hearing, there's no debate. Counsel just listens. That's the the emphasis is in hearing. So you don't engage on this. Uh just listen. That's the purpose of the hearing. If you wanted to do a public hearing and something else. Can't, but there's statutory obligation that you have to do a public hearing.
Any other comments?
Question.
Okay, all in favor?
I just.
Close, motion carried.
So to be clear, that is first and second reading and bring it to maybe the whole for discussion. First and second.
Yeah, first and second, committee of the whole and public hearing.
Uh if I may, I did not have a second year for your amendment.
Okay, do we have a second year on that?
Fortune amendment?
Two readings, committee of the whole.
Committee of the whole.
Instead of a public hearing.
So yeah, that's.
All no, no also.
All second.
Why why do we need to committee the whole?
Sorry, committee of the whole and uh here.
Yes, I mean, uh the gaping hole which we witnessed tonight is when people get a chance to speak because. Council can't interview them. They don't get picked a chance to. Then we don't get to ask them. There's no interchange. It's a loser.
Okay, you seconded the Council McLaughlin. Okay, uh next item is. Ten point one point ten zoning and development by law. Amendments uh and the recommendation is that council adopt the revised short term rental policy as proposed. And that council grant the first second reading to the proposed amendments to zoning and development by law five twenty twenty seventeen and direct staff to schedule a public hearing. In accordance with the statutory requirements.
Before you vote, before you vote.
Yeah, we're gonna make the motion and we'll speak to it.
Okay, before you do, before you do.
Mm hmm.
My recommendation on this is you don't vote with the policy. You have the policy. But you have the policy because the bylaw was lacking. Now the bylaw is tight and what it needs to be, you no longer need the policy. I just put that policy in a fine tuned policy, just in case you wanted it, but you shouldn't need it. So the clean way to do this is just do the the zoning amendment. Don't need the policy. Abandon the policy.
Okay. So uh this is on agenda. Do we suggest that we eliminate it now?
No, my recommendation is to is just consider the second part, which is grant first and second reading to the zoning by law. Okay, don't bother.
Okay, so the motion on the table uh that has been recommended is that council grant first and second reading to the proposed amendment to zoning development by law five twenty twenty seventeen and direct staff to schedule a public hearing. In accordance with statutory requirements. Uh motion for that, uh take Council McLaughlin, seconded, Council Brown. Uh comments? Yeah, Councilor Abbott.
Um but get back to the policy. I thought in the previous meeting, council agreed that we did want to propose certainly I could form the new policy and I thought that was the agreement. I still believe you should keep opposing this stuff in the policy that's not in the bylaw.
Yeah, Mr. Blackwell.
So just. To insist, yeah, so policies. That speak to bylaws are usually created when there is a problem with interpretation of the bylaws, because the bylaws are poorly written. So then in for the purpose of trying to. Clarify the intent of a certain provision in a bylaw, policies are established. That was the case in. This S T R issue. All policies do is they're sort of like interpreted, turped guides to that are utilized to interpret the intent of the bylaw. Doesn't give any greater or lesser effect. The bylaw prevails always. So the the objective should be to revise a bylaw so policies are no longer needed. That's that's the high watermark of Paul bylaw writing. So I would suggest to council that throughout the best of its efforts. The zoning, the language now is tight where it needs to be. And the the policy now is redundant. The language zoning by law language is proposed is clear enough. That no further direction fee policy is required.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor?
I.
Close, motion carried. Okay, uh next item is uh ten point one point one two public toilets. Uh staff according the public washroom facilities. Uh Mr. Burr, would you like to comment on this?
So before he does, we get just kick the ball off.
Mm hmm.
So this is an issue that Mr. Murray and I had been wrestling with somewhat independently, but also collectively. There's quite a history to this. And there's different launch points with regard to where to start the discussion. At the end of the day, the issue is. There are a lot of people that come through Lions Bay that need washroom facilities. And there is a significant number of people that knock on the front door of the company's civil office, asking to use the toilet, our toilets. So the issue here is really ultimately for council. Should it is there value in providing toilets to the traveling public? In the mid village area so that you don't find, in Carl's words, random effusions. Uh at various locations adjacent to that area. And so we've sort of had discussions about how we could achieve that. Some of those discussions have included leasing a small area from the strata by the store. To provide that as a location for for public washrooms. It is not for the store at all. That's not the purpose of these. It is for the traveling public. Who are abuting in the general area. Uh or otherwise uh knocking on on the municipal office door. So that's what that that's about. It's not dissimilar to the toilets up at Sunset. Uh the lobbies up at Sunset, et cetera. So with that. Well, thanks. Uh if I may, uh through the chair, that pretty much summarizes the issue. Um we have, as we espouse, to provide public washroom facilities elsewhere in the village. Uh this is a an. Not an immersion. Let's call it an immersion meet. The traveling public stops. Usually they are at the end of their tether. They need facilities kind of now. If we don't provide them to use a bush and um and and the evidence of that is is rampant throughout the village. Um we 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 are actually in the process of. Is the is humanity doomed? Our reserve judgment. Um we we are implementing signage directing people to uh both beach park washrooms. Carbon Grove is one exit away by the time they read the sign. Um although it's most desirable for us, it's on the S T P. So there's no there's no pump out required. There's. There's no threat to the septic system, but it's better than portable, uh sending to Lions Bay Beach. Problem there is whether they park because uh the visitor parking there is pay only. So we are actually going to reserve one spot for five minutes. Very hard to enforce, of course, so that you can run into the washroom and run back. Where is the washroom? Use Google. I don't have roaming. You've got a problem. So this is not a be all and end all, but we're trying to direct people down there. Do you want to provide public washrooms in the central part of the village? Is is the central question around this report?
Okay, do you do you actually need our our guidance on this then, or is this an operational?
So you ultimately.
What would the budget be on this?
Yeah, so ultimately it's operational, but the decision versus policy based to Mr. Burr's question. Do we want to avoid some of these collateral damage, if you will, uh associated with not having toilets? Uh or not? And if the policy decision is wrong, yes, in principle, how much would it cost? I'll tell you if it's not the plastic ones, which are nasty. It's about it's in the order of.
It's about, it's in the order of sixty thousand dollars to put a nice one in that has solar lights, that has, you know, the land washing station and so forth.
Yeah, that would be plumbed, uh, it would be something like a one or two thousand gallon tank, would require regular pumping. Um, would be located probably on least property at the store alongside the space we already utilized for public garbage can.
So you are, you said a municipal property at the store?
Least, least probably.
Least probably, or who'd you say, use it?
No, least. Um, there's a lot of issues around, uh, the semi-permanence facility, uh, do we lock it? Um, where does the water come from? If we, if we bring it from a municipal main, the service line is about a hundred meters long, it's going to cost money. Um, do people sleep in there? Um, what do we do when they do? Uh, et cetera, et cetera. Another alternative on this cumbersome is just to put in four portals, like their portals are massive. And I'm not very pleasant.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you very much, I concur. Uh, the supposedly locked one at Brunswick, it was just there the other day, I unfortunately opened the door. It's, I'm glad my wife didn't hear this, it's just horrible, if I was a bus driver, I'd be doing something else. Uh, thank you, Mr. Burr, it's a thorough report, it's a good, good piece on this one. You're looking for feedback. I struggle with supporting a, a private enterprise in this fashion. You know, they pay for their own garbage, they pay for their own, uh, this, the whole complex, this is, the, the store is just limited thinking, it's all part of the same complex, so they do their own snow plowing, snow removals, their own garbage. And, um, I think that, I appreciate that the store is not helping themselves out in terms of declining people who need to use the facilities. And, but I think I am of your view that we need to do something, so I would suggest that showing, uh, putting them in anywhere near the store is a support for private enterprise. I would suggest, and I am aware that, uh, people bang on the office door, try to break into the gym, do all sorts of funny things, uh, my suggestion is that we be somewhat friendly and put, uh, potties in a, uh, more open area and I would suggest something like Marjorie Meadows, Marjorie Meadows. It, it's, it's really only one way into the village. Everybody would see it, or we could directly sign it, or I don't know what you were talking about. I suppose you could more, put it more aesthetically pleasing so that and people weren't upset. We could also be satisfying the needs of our residents who are at the current bus stop. Uh, that's my feedback on that.
Okay, uh, Counselor Brownson.
Yeah, I think we're looking at the least worst option here, not the best option. Um, I, I could not see a sixty thousand or plus or whatever involvement at the, at the, at the commercial property. I think Marjorie Meadows, uh, you're talking four units, I don't think, uh, I'm concerned, I think if, if people are, if it's urgent, they're, they're prepared to wait to be there, so a couple of units, I think, would do it. That's what you added up.
Yeah, we did, they were full, they were full within days, it all depends on the weather, as, as we go into.
So it's actually been getting full, that's the issue.
That's, that's how you set the count.
Yeah, okay, no, I mean, I was thinking of, of waiting time, but you're talking about actual.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, they, they could queue, uh, that's not the issue, it's.
Yeah.
But these, the walls are only thirty two gallons.
Yeah, sure, sure. Okay, so, uh, well, it isn't going to be the most pleasant thing, it is going to serve a need. And, I mean, somebody may, may remember next time to.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm ready for, uh, I, 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 these, all things we thought about, of course, Marjorie Meadows is, at, at the motor sport as well as another. That's even more, in the face of the problem of Marjorie's is, um, very close proximity to people walking by, it seems not pleasant very quickly.
Yeah.
It's very close to, um, the strata.
Nice walking path.
Yeah.
It's gonna detract from the story, it's a nice, we've walked up there many times, it's a beautiful path.
It's, as you say, there's, there's no good options.
No good options. Yeah. Is there any funding available from transport or the highways or?
No, is the short answer, this, this is a municipal problem.
Yeah.
In fact, we are actually doing a favor, uh, you know, to, to sort of support our, our transit by providing facilities for the bus and pusher. Before the time they gave us their secret lock, uh, it was, it was vandalized.
Vehrated.
Somewhat unfortunate, if you haven't heard, uh, we put, we put a single year at Brunswick, it was destroyed within two days.
So that was for the bus drivers?
Only for the bus drivers, it's gonna be as.
So would that be something that transit would look at funding then, because we have a bus stop near there?
It's not worth, you know, it's a hundred and eighty bucks a month, it's not worth the trouble. It's a favor to transmit, to, to make them a little more amenable to suggestions we're going to be making to them on schedule changes and.
Just a little bit more for council to know, this is an important piece to know. It sounds like the bus are having, a lot of the blue bus drivers are in the older set, which means that they really need the washroom. And they have been finding it hard to get bus drivers on this route. And so when I heard about this, I thought we don't want to have the situation where we've got to staff this bus. So Carl and I spoke, and we said, let's get a toilet in there, because that's the beginning and the end of the bus route, as you know.
It's not.
So I thought if that toilet facility helps deal with their issue, because it's otherwise the only other spots, Safeway, and they don't have enough time to use Safeway. And if that helps keep the drivers running the buses.
Figured this.
Being helped. So that's, that was the, that's why we did that.
Or could there be a suggestion that we ask highways to, you know, it gives you the, how many kilometers to the next fuel station before you leave West Van, before you pass that Chevron?
So if I may, through the, through the chair, uh, we're considering whether we do that or put no facilities signage on the highway. It's in here, uh, and you know, I, I want to hear what's council think. Does that mean that people think that the cafe is closed? Uh, does it mean, what does it mean? If they don't stop looking for facilities here because there was a sign that said, uh, what does no facilities mean? Should we say no toilets? That looks a bit strange, that's understanding how that's like.
Mm-hmm. What, um, as to location, you mentioned the, uh, the signboard out, the other side of the creek. Um, what about done by the Polk and Wright? Because the bus drivers have a place to pull over as well, so the bus drivers could use it.
Could put them there, and your question is, do you want portals that are unpleasant? We could put, we could put.
I don't think we have an option.
Unless, uh, what, what?
Even if it wasn't portals and it was something else, why, why would you not put it down in the Polk and Wright?
We could. Strictly speaking, it's not us, but Modi, whose values will not.
As the right.
Yeah, we can't, to be clear, we can't put that, uh, facility there for the bus drivers. Uh, because that's, that's mid route, the only place that we could put it is where they, they stop at the, at the Brunswick. And that's the only place that we can do it.
Yeah, don't worry too much about the transit toilet, that's a red area, we're talking about public toilets.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, how, how many? Uh, we think four minimum, if there were portals, judging by the use.
I'm not.
The, the, the incremental use that we saw when we put two at the store temporarily.
It could start with two.
And it could also start with two, and you know, the, the eight at Sunset are full on, on Monday. That'd be a pretty interesting, yeah. So the question is, do you want them at all? Or do you want to do something to divert, I, I, I suggested, you know, there's, there's council strategic political level things you could do, and that's in between problems to, to put, um, facilities on the highway. At the viewpoint just past Eagle Point, uh, in the northbound and, um, at Towne Point.
That makes almost sense.
Yeah, it's not gonna happen tomorrow, of course.
Yeah, like, like, I need to jump in, the chance of that happening is like getting struck by lightning.
Well, I will say that when at Towne Point, there was one until it could have been.
It was, it was a high, high tech toilet that just lit on fire, burned to pieces. It's unlikely that MOTT will.
Try again.
Yeah, flip the bell.
The Coca-Halo, when you leave Merrick, has a lovely, uh, outhouse facility on the side of the road. That is also an option.
Yeah. I would suggest that you say.
Okay. All right, okay, uh.
Yeah, me, well, we need some sort of direction, otherwise we're, it's a whole re-packing, you know, over to.
How about, how about, uh, we move it to the committee of the hall?
That's fine.
We don't have, because.
I, I, to me, it's part of bodies, and to that we're.
Yeah, I think it's part of bodies and death, so something.
I'd say.
I, I want to. No sixty thousand dollars.
That's fine, I, no, I, I would not recommend that, in fact, I do. Um, what I, what I need to know is, what does council want to see in these toilets? Because nobody's gonna like where they are.
Tell you what, how much staff take this away and we'll bring back some ideas for locations to the September sixteenth.
Yeah, okay.
There's two weeks, we can do it.
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay, uh, move on to the next item, uh, ten point one point three, just like to know how many toilets were extracted, or was that the last? Yeah. Okay, ten point one point fourteen, beach park financials report, uh, and that's over there. Mr. Chirkoff.
Staff report is for information, this is summary of custody, uh, personal budget provided, or the regular grant funding provided, so, um, they, this is on the front page, um, the original grant application included. Um, on the second page, their report is by vendor, and then the subsequent pages, two pages to show a more detailed breakdown by, and all invoices incurred for the, uh, my business party date. And then that's, so, that we haven't put any shovels into the ground, majority, half the cost are design and engineering, and then the other half the cost is, um, the pretty sort that we put out for the base structure. Um, we need to, to sort of December, we need six, nine months of time to get it, um, to go special.
And that's the information, so this is where we're at today. Okay, any questions? Mr. Chirkoff, Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chirkoff, I appreciate the numbers and in a different way it's presented. Uh, the million dollar question is, what does the washroom cost? Because without that number there, the rest of the information is. So that's question number one. Question number two, the request, uh, approved by the majority of council was, uh, detailed disclosure on the transplant grant, I don't see any of that. There are other things, but I'm gonna let it go with those two.
As a grant, I did not see that.
Sixteen to be fair. Uh, as the missing number.
On the side, that would be referred to, uh, uh, and I'll go back to Ross and that project manager.
Well, let's make that the sixteenth as well.
All right, Ross is in the old facilities, I, give him a, a minute here and let's, uh.
I know the evening, I know the evening's tight, very, uh, if the numbers can wait till the sixteenth is first, I'm concerned.
Yeah, okay. Counselor Allen.
Can I raise a comment? I think, I think the request here is for a forecast of, of the project where it's gonna end. Not actually spaced today, even if we got the actual contract value for the washroom, it still doesn't help us. It's what, what, what's the forecast, what is getting done, what isn't getting done, how much over budget or under budget is going to.
Okay.
That's what, that's what we need to focus. For the sixteen.
Right, okay, so the, um, what we're, um, and it's getting, and just, uh, my, which I'll include in the staff report in sixteen is, um, we have a contract with your house, um, to do the construction, um, that's to the tune of five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars, I believe. Life's a good sport.
Oh, yeah, I can't remember that.
Yeah, so there's, that's the biggest chunk, um, and then there's, um, with that, it breaks kind of the architect's, but, uh.
If I may, I've been, so this could be updated for the next council meeting on a full disclosure on the transplant.
Yeah.
But that is, it'd be fun.
Okay, any other comments?
You guys say safety as well.
Yeah, we've got to be careful with what we talk about with the, that funding.
I, I, right, council's good staff direction, so we can expect.
Okay, uh, we'll move to, uh, let's see, Mayor and Council, as instruct, uh, all the best uses of this, uh, village facilities, ten point three point two.
I think we're up to.
And we struck that as well, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, we are at eleven point one point one.
Thank you very much.
Which is, uh, Counselor McLaughlin's, uh, uh, resolution, I'll move it over to Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you very much, very. Again, I know that we need to get back in, in camera for an important matter. I'll be quick on this one, the resolution, the council requests all staff returning to the office full time to work and that those hours are supposed and all staff are expected to be attended during those times and that were an exception is made, the time allowed working remotely will not be on a Monday, Friday or before or after holiday, and these changes will take effect January first twenty six. The quick skinny on the back, oh, I guess I need a second here.
Yeah, seconded by counsel.
Thank you, I'm gonna continue with discussion, remember, thank you. As you can see from that handout that I sent electronically to folks who won't believe it. Uh, COVID times are past and it is common practice in enterprise and both large and small governments bring their employees back to work, um, exclusively, uh, we're a small community, our staff are integral to the operations. I recognize their deficiencies and enjoyments of working remotely, and I know that our staff always make themselves available, whether they're here or elsewise, however, full time physical attendance at the office is important as an image to, in our community and for practical business purposes. And it's a clarification, well, the word of the resolution is, refers to staff, I'm very cognizant the one person employee rule applies, and that that's what we're really talking about, and, uh, my recommendation is that the C O consider implementing the same mandate to other employees. Uh, key points here, why I'm putting this forward are for, uh, increased camaraderie, live interaction, quicker problem solving, mentorship, and hands-on training and feedback and non-time concerning discussion, example being walking ten feet versus texting, phone, emailing, waiting. Uh, regardless of what's transpired, uh, to date, uh, the allowance for change is, is generous and in sync with enterprise and government. I have nothing else to add.
Okay, um, discussion.
Mr. McLaughlin. Let me, I, I need just to weigh in, um, so, when appearing this, to be clear, this is to do with the C O only, uh, this is not to do with staff and, nor should it, because that's purely an operational matter, that rests solely with me. I'm of a different school of thought with staff, uh, given life realities. We need to be flexible and it's important for all of the reasons that we understand are important around morale and lifestyle and so forth, to have that sort of flexibility at the staff level. It's never been an issue, it's never been abused, it is sort of the common practice, uh, that there's this opportunities, many local governments, in fact, uh, do short weeks. I'm not proposing that, but there, I, I need to have that flexibility to, to, to manage the workplace the way that works for my staff, and I'll continue to do that. Uh, for me, uh, the bus from my council, I get up at four o'clock in the morning to serve this community, and tonight I'll be at home at one thirty in the morning. That means I don't have any, I don't have the luxury of going home and running a few errands after work. I only have time on weekends. So that means I don't get to go to the doctor, the dentist, or take care of any of these things, so I need the flexibility on Fridays or Mondays, it's usually Fridays if I have to do it, or I go to the doctor's office or whatever I have to attend to. And work from home as a result, rather than use a holiday day for a one hour doctor's, it's just impractical. Uh, you know, I commute to six hours a day, like, I don't know how, how you would think, do respect, that I could sort of stick handle this. Uh, it, it just makes my job even more difficult to, to do.
Okay. Any other comments? Counselor Brownson.
I think this is, this is something that we need to consider and, and talk about and, and, uh, for it to be an on table. Um, I don't think it's appropriate, uh, at this point, I, I think it could be a notice of motion. Um, but I'd like to look at the implications of this and, uh, also, you know, look at, look at context. Um, certainly I hear, hear the, the logic involved, but I think we need to look at some practicalities. It's, it's a far, we, we're looking at essentially, uh,
It's, it's a far, we, we were looking at essentially, uh. Uh, for, for days in on site, one day, uh. Remote, uh, kind of format for, for considerable period of time here. I'm not gonna get into previous CEOs, but, but it was quite, quite a different kind of model there. Um, so anyway, I, I think it could be a notice of motion, I think we need to think about it, I think we need to think about the implications. And I think we need to consider this in terms of, of, of the strategic planning that we're looking at. And the uh C A O evaluation that we're looking at as well.
Hey, any other comments?
Hey, Councilor. Do you think it would be reasonable to digest this and discuss further as when we do our C A O review, which I. Believe we've settled kind of on next Tuesday, so everybody take this away and come back and we can. Have a discussion at that point, a little bit further.
Okay, any other comments?
Um, you're to see, are you?
We're to see, are you? Can we have it in the trial?
Okay. Thank you, uh, next item is eleven point one point two, uh, and this is, uh, Councilor Abbott's, uh. Yeah. Notification to council that the C A, C A C is considering a green municipal fund grant application. Uh, so, hey.
Yes, the question, what is the conditional motion, why does it say that, so, I just did a quick update, uh. Inside, and we've been away, we use a good council, we've been totally trying to do, um, an application for this, for this grant. Uh, what it is, it's a grant, um, that provides for. For communities to actually do, um, environment risk assessments, and, um. Where the studies that are typically required for, and applying for other grants. And it is, um, a anywhere between sixty and hundred percent grant, in our case, it will be at least eighty percent, because we're a small community. You get extra points for being a small community, um, could possibly even get up to a hundred percent if, um, if we had a, another news that you work with. And we could have some sort of First Nations engagement, so it's a minimum eighty percent, probably a hundred percent. I, I don't believe it needs to come to, to answer for the budget approval, um, because you, we proposed a committee because it comes out of the healthcare money. Uh, we've got a hundred and something thousand dollar left to spend in healthcare money, um, in the next two years. Um, and this would be a perfect place to use it, like, council's a very PVC director, but the committee gets to recommend that. And I understand they only recommend council needs to approve, so what I'm kind of asking for is that, uh. Staff be, be authorized to go ahead and support us if we can get this done on Thursday, there's a chance we may not. Um, we're hoping to get someone from the membership council, basically, come help, help us with this and speak to us. If we can get the, uh, by next week, the sixteenth next week, then we're gonna have to leave it till next year's, um, next year's sort of crunch go around. Um, but if we can pull this off, I'm gonna have to call another meeting to do so. So it's really just, staff need, you know, to support us on this as well as.
Okay, uh, that's the one.
I just made a suggestion, given that it's an advisory committee to council, which we're comfortable in admitting the language. That councils support the C A C or endorse or whatever director, whatever the C A C to apply for this grant, but I have, I need a sound, a small rating change, but.
That would be wonderful. I prefer it forward.
Okay, uh, second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Close motion, carry, okay.
Sorry, I, I have to catch a taxi.
Uh, problem.
Uh, if, don't forget to go back to closed.
And you should get some calls, we can deal with that, without you.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we'll move to correspondence.
Thank you, uh, I understand, I'm on correspondence, you're great, so. You'll be amazed at how brief I am, the general correspondence has two, uh. Two correspondents from our residents regarding parking fines, I propose to take those two, respond to them. The other items in the general correspondence are, are from other different governments. Uh, with the exception of Blink forty-nine, which is talking about their municipality, which Karen Jefferson's following. So I don't propose that we review, talk, or do anything about those, uh, and, uh, council taking a good face. They'll respond to the two visitors, so each got fines and would like somebody to answer. So that's fine, I'll move on to the residence correspondence, and all but one, and we'll deal with the all, uh, are doing with, well, actually. It's either by law, by law enforcement, uh, garbage and recycling connection, connection, uh, bit of red hair on water quality at the marina and stuff like that. And trail conditions, I propose to council that's facing me responding on all those on their behalf. All the ones that have to deal with, uh, bylaw, we've done a fair amount of that tonight. Uh, I think the parking fines, that's probably going to come in our park, parking. Parking report that, uh, last meeting, I mentioned, and I put that forward to council, but it's just not the right time to do that, and we'll do that later. Um, so which, if council has faith in me responding, I'll do that, and I believe, uh, council can, this council did a copy or got to this by yourself, and. I don't know what the deal is, and you respond to a, a resident, does everybody get copied?
Yes, nothing's changed.
Pardon, nothing's changed, okay, nothing's changed, good. So which brings us down to the last one, which is the Lions Bay Arts, and they have a request. And if you could scroll through to your stuff, it is. A patient's from the D M. Can scroll faster. And they have a request, and that request is.
I think it's a request to get a quote for artwork.
Yeah, thank you for giving us.
On the, uh, washroom building, um, could I speak to that?
Uh, just, I mean, I, yeah.
Let me, let me talk around, talk around with.
I just got the page number, thank you, it's on three oh nine, it's three ten, almost there. On the goal line. Michael, please, go.
Go, okay, good, okay, uh, we had Rebecca Montgomery came forward, making, making a proposal for the underpass. And as a result of that, she, uh, I believe she asked the arts council to assist in, in making the application for the. For the First Nations artwork or on the underpass, and I'm wondering if, if we could, uh. Maybe ask that we reach out to Rebecca and see if there's a, any way that, that there is grant funding available or, or, you know, a possibility or an extension of. Of the underpass project or something like that, because, um, you know, I, I think. I, I mean, I, I don't know what, what it would cost for artwork on, on the, on the washroom, but definitely should be there, fully, fully support it. But I'm, I'm just suggesting that we look for creative ways to fund it.
Hmm, okay, just read from the thing, lands we are remains interested in assisting the village. With this project, we are very concerned that the current render is a republic, there will obviously be an expectation that it will look like the render, so kind, okay, so. In conclusion, if questions, Lions Bay Arts can provide an estimate of the cost to provide the appropriate artwork to the building, should constantly be as required. Simply said, the answer is yes.
Yes, could you please, yeah.
Okay. Uh, that'll, and.
That'll conclude correspondence. Okay, thanks very much.
Yeah, just going, I'm surprised by the statement that they were told was no budget for this. It should have been part of the budget.
That's in Georgia. So to say we're, she got her information.
Yes.
Okay, next item, new business, uh, not new business.
Sorry, just to that point, this should come, be coming out of a beach park budget.
Okay.
I have another, another city.
That's something, uh.
I, my reply will.
Reach out to.
I, my reply will address that.
Thank you. Thank you, okay, uh, public questions, comments, anyone in the gallery?
Um, one thing, as far as from Ron McLaughlin brought up about, um, the C A O coming back, it sounds like to the office. Um, just like it's being required of other employees or whatever, I would just be interested to know, what were the conditions of employment when the C A O first came on? Like, was it stated that we could have extension guys, or was it expected to come in, or would that be interested to know?
Okay, those are all things hopefully for reviewing the C, C A O's, uh, upcoming needs. Okay, anyone online?
No.
Oh, okay, uh, with that, we'll, uh, adjourn the open portion of the meeting and, do I motion to adjourn and move back into closed?
I do, so.